I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Um, I can't find the agenda. Hold on, here it is. It was amended. It's a special meeting, so it is a limited agenda. So the first thing that we have up here is a consideration of a resolution to support a 2020 application for the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Community Connectivity Grant Program. Got all that out in one breath.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So this is Mike Rosenthal, manager, speaking. Thank you for accommodating this business item onto tonight's agenda. I know it's a special meeting, so the reason it made its way onto the special meeting, hence why we had to amend the agenda, was due to the nature of the timing of the grant application. So the Community Connectivity Grant Program, which is administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, I'm sorry, I was letting some people in the room. They, this is a grant that promotes construction projects that make conditions safer for pedestrians and bicyclists in town, encouraging people to walk and bike more around town. And the grant application for this is due October 16th for this year's grant cycle. This is a grant that historically we've been awarded once before as a community. I guess it's a relatively new grant, but it also is not released every single year, somewhat similar to the STEEP grant where you have some years it's on, some years it's not. This year, we got notification about maybe three weeks ago that it was going to be on. And as council will remember, we did have a walking tour back in September of the Talon Green Historic Sidewalks to try to understand from the State Historic Preservation Office if that project, A, is, could be potentially utilized, this connectivity grant to fund, and B, would that give us enough time to put together an application? And the answers we received during that walking tour were, yes, it would be permissible to use this grant for that, but the timing was way too short. This would be better shelved until next year, or possibly the year after, whenever the next grant cycle would be. But that gives us time in the meantime to do a historic survey through the State Historic Preservation Office to apply for that grant, to really get our ducks in a row for what the commission would actually require to do that project. So what that caused the staff to do is go back to the drawing board here and put together an application for what we think would be a good use of construction funds for this grant cycle, which again is due in about 10 days. And the project that we came up with, which was actually in the capital plan, was to work on the Cross Farms Recreation Area to connect the upper fields and make them ADA accessible. So if you remember, the town's already committed $10,000 from last capital plan for design of this. This would fund the construction of the project. And as the paperwork tonight says, the grant would cover 100% construction. The town's consulting engineer, CHA, is currently working on the design and cost estimates. So we do anticipate we would have full construction estimates in time to submit the grant for the 16th. We just don't have them tonight because they're being worked upon. As I said, this is sort of the, this was sort of a good Plan B. I mean, it is our, now it's our Plan A, but we wanted to make sure we had at least two things going, parallel, so that in case the historic sidewalk didn't work out, that we'd be able to apply for something. And this is another situation where you can apply for the grant as long as you don't have outstanding money from a previous year. So we're able to, you know, we, the last time we did this program, we actually had partial funding for the, what's the path, the path that was just, that connects the library down to TIS. That was done using this money as well in the past. So that project is done, and now we can apply for this one. And that's sort of my preamble to this. Of course, if there's any questions, I don't know if myself, or maybe Scott, or any of the other department heads in the room can help answer the questions, but tonight's request is just to give me permission, as the town manager, to apply for the grant, for this grant cycle.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mike on this? Brenda?
Yes, um, thank you, Mike. That was, that actually answered a number of my questions before that I had written down. The one that I have left is it, you had mentioned that it was going to cover all the construction materials. I thought I saw somewhere that it doesn't cover signage, but I didn't think we had any signage, or was it signals? I don't think it covers signals. We don't have any of that in our plan, right? I, I know this was just one part of the plan that was there, but I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure if Scott, maybe you know the answer to that, or, because I know you've worked with this grant in the past. Do you accept bringing a bell to you?
Yeah, there's, there's no signals needed. It's, um, it would be realignment of the crosswalk that leaves the pavilion now and goes straight across. It would angle more to the area of where the proposed handicap parking will be, which is like the, the corner of the parking lot. We would erect some signs notifying people, because people do come around that corner relatively quickly. We would let them know that there is a crosswalk ahead.
And the, the last question I had, I noticed there's two proposed handicapped accessible parking spots. Is that enough for this location? I mean, I know we're probably, that's how many percentage-wise the state tells us, but taking a look at this facility, is it something that we want more than two for? Or is too good enough?
My understanding is two is acceptable. There's one regular one and one van accessible. There are other handicap parking spots in front of Adam's Adventure if needed, but for the, the ball fields, based on the number of people that attend or what have you, the engineers said that this would be fine.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Anybody else have any questions on this?
Susan has her hand up.
Um, we, it's not public though, right? We, there's not, we can't take, there's no public participation on any part of this, is there?
It's correct that this special agenda doesn't have public comment. Just, just for the record, I did reach out to the Commission on People with Disabilities to make them aware of, and, you know, Susan may be representing herself and not the Commission, but I just let them know that this was on the agenda tonight, just to be aware of it, just because it sort of follows on to our site tour from last month.
So I'm not quite sure how you want to handle it? Because it's a special agenda and no public participation on it, so.
That's, yeah, that's correct, because it is a special agenda. We, we, we can't add public, we cannot add public comment to this agenda.
So Susan, I'm sorry, I can't call on you right now, but I would say please send your questions in to us. If you want to send them in quickly on email, I can pull it up and see if it's something that we can, we can ad lib here. So this is the project that we spoke about before, making all the fields accessible, making sure that they're, they're, they have connectivity from the parking lot up to the fields, correct? Is it all of the upper fields, baseball fields, the soccer fields? Scott, which fields are we really looking at being able to improve here?
It's the three baseball fields straight across from the pavilion that go up the hill.
Yep.
The soccer fields have not been addressed yet, because the parking lot that's down there is not ADA accessible, because it's just rough millings. That's in our, our plan down the road, our capital plan, to reclaim that, make that a paved area, so that it does offer more accessibility to people that have limitations on their, their walking or what have you.
The soccer field, I don't think, I know there's a handicap spot down there, but I don't think any of it's really, really accessible. Very much. So is that, that's going to be another phase, I would assume?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And will this also address the, the request that we had from Dan before, to be able to get, get over to the fields from the road? Right? So I know we had looked at kind of doing a jerry rig and getting that just good enough last time, and this will make it so it'll be 100% accessible from there, correct?
Yes, he'll be able to, he or anybody in a wheelchair or, or that has limitations will be able to go up the path, which is going to be ADA compliant. And at each one of the, the two lower fields, if you will, they're going to have a viewing area there. They'll also have one facing the first field as you come in on the right, but it will be in the outfield, it won't be at the backstop.
Okay. And so in total, we would have, what, four handicap spots there? How, what, is there any regulation saying that we can't put more, or that?
No, no. It's, um, you know, we can put them on each side. We try not to put anybody right behind a backstop, because it's a distraction to the pitcher.
Right.
So these, these are actually off to the side. From the, the plan that I saw, I know where they're off to the side of the backstops. It doesn't mean that you can't put one on each side, so you could have, you know, two people at, at each, and not two people, but I believe they were like a six by eight or six by 10 flat area where people could sit.
Okay. So I think, so we're, we're talking, are we talking handicap spots for people to, that's what you're talking about, like for wheelchairs and people like that, not for cars?
Correct. The cars, the cars are on the main parking lot.
Right. And there's more than two handicap spots down there, correct?
Well, there's, that's what's being proposed now, is two in the upper right-hand corner as you're going up to the two baseball fields. But there are, I believe, six or seven right in front of Adam's Adventure right now.
There, I knew there were quite a few down in front of Adam's Adventure.
Yes.
And I believe there's also, I believe there was also two down by the lower soccer fields, correct?
I believe so, but that's, again, the, the parking lot down there is not really easily...
The, the fields aren't accessible to you, but there are parking spots there, if we should be. So that would give us, what, like, in total, if there was six, that would give us like 10 parking, 10 handicap parking spots?
At, at a minimum, yep.
Okay. All right. I think I'm good with that. Does anybody else have any questions on that? I was under the impression it was just going to be a couple of handicap spots, and I knew there were quite a few there already, so making up to 10 is, I think, that's, I'm good with that. Anybody else?
Steve has his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Steve, I didn't see your hand.
No, no, it's okay. I just, I just raised my hand. So Steve Jones, I don't know if this is a part of any long-term plans, but is there any connectivity planned between this and Birch Grove? Or is it, or is the plans for Birch Grove going to be kind of cordoned off, so there's really not any accessibility for, for children to go, or parents to go from Birch Grove, once it's completed, to Cross Farms?
I'm not sure if that appears, as, as you just suggested, Steve, I'm not sure if that is in the capital plan at the moment. I think the thought here was to, to do this and try to apply for this connectivity grant, because it's a project we'd already sort of mapped out in the past and have committed some funding towards. That would probably require a little bit more fleshing out. That was something that I remember, I think Bruce actually recommended that idea for a future connectivity grant, but it's something that, you know, if there's, the, the need is there and, and people would like that, I think we would have to probably put that in our capital plan.
Okay. Yeah, no, that, that covers probably at least my first question, just in terms of both the connectivity between the two parcels, as well as, I guess, probably public safety in terms of if they had the access from one location or another to get to one area, that having them connected might be another entry point or an access point for them, if there was ever some kind of emergency or evacuation situation that was needed. And the entryway to Birch Grove was blocked off for whatever reason, you know, that that might be a secondary route for them. But I was just going to pull up, I saw that Susan sent in an email to the council.
Yeah, it was about parking.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, just to summarize, I think it was if, if we're spending the money on, to make it handicap accessible, why not have more than two spots? And I guess Scott probably already answered it a little bit with the number of spots that are currently there, but, but would it make sense to have more there? Like, I, I haven't been to Cross Farms in some times, so I don't know the exact proximity of spots in terms, in accessibility, as well as the, the frequency of use.
That's what I was just asking. That's why I think it was parking spots, not like other spots. So if it's parking spots, there's 10. If it's like flat spots for people to, for wheelchairs to sit, that's what's happening.
Right. Those, the, the areas for the wheelchairs are alongside the backstops. Those are for viewing areas for people in wheelchairs, elderly people, what have you. The parking spots are to the right of, if you, and I know you say, I haven't been there in a while, but there's a driveway that goes up to the back of the fields, which is where we store a lot of our materials for dressing the field, the ball fields and what have you. That, that area is where the path is going to go through. It's going to have to wind back and forth so that it meets the ADA requirements, but, and to, to address your point a little further, Steve, if you're looking at Birch Grove and you look to, we'll say, to the, the left of it, that actually backs up to where the, where we store all these materials. So that route is somewhat there if there was an emergency for evacuation. It, it's not a paved path, but it's, if you had to get emergency vehicles in, they can get up to there.
Okay. And so would this project improve any storage capacity, as well as making it be compliant? Or is it, is it taking away at all from your, your current capacity?
No, it's not going to have any effect on us whatsoever.
Okay. All right. I think that covers the questions I had off the top of my head for this.
So if there's no questions, there is a proposed resolution for tonight, if, if you would consider it.
I didn't see it. Did, did you see it, Steve? I just saw it.
It's on page four.
Or, see, I can entertain the motion that be it resolved, that it's all, on Town Council supports the submittal of an application for construction of an ADA compliant pathway, and further authorizes that Michael Rosen, who holds the office of town manager, and has held that office since September 9th, 2019, to execute all documents on behalf of the town, approved by the Talon Town Council on October 6th, 2020.
I'll second that, Kirk Jenner, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou? Lou? Did he get bumped?
No, he's talking into, but Lou, I don't think your microphone's on.
I, I can see Lou verbalizing "I," but his, uh, mic is not working, and he just did a thumbs up.
His thumbs up, okay. So Lou has said yes. Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an "I," so that passes unanimously.
Thank you. And what we'll do now is we will, once we get the estimates, we will put together the application. We have nine days, so it goes quick.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having a problem finding the agenda. I don't, I only have the one that's, that was sent, the link through Talon.org, so that's fine. Like, if there's nothing else on there necessarily that I need to have, but, okay. So the next item is our Eversource debrief with the town staff.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Mike Rosenthal, town manager. Also definitely want to acknowledge the many members of town staff and volunteer staff who are here tonight. So just to kind of flip through, we have Scott Lappin, DPW director. We have Lisa Hancock, Finance Director. John Laitel, who is our Public Safety Director, Fire Chief, and Emergency Management Director. Mike Wilkinson's on from HR. Paul Russell from DPW. Carl Dogan, Deputy Fire Chief. Rob DeBica, Fire Marshal. And I believe Jim Toomey is, as well. I think he's, the title now is Deputy Chief as well. I think it's just two different titles for Jim. But anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge a lot of people are here, and we're here at the wish of the council to discuss storm preparation and emergency provisions when we go into a state of emergency. The department heads who are all here today are all on the EOC team that you, you've gotten to know so well over the past seven months, since we've been in the COVID-19 state of emergency. We all have roles and hats that we wear as part of the EOC team. And really, what we, we're here tonight to sort of stand ready to answer questions that the council may have about how, how emergency operations works, or if you have questions specific to Tropical Storm Isaius, which occurred on August 4th, 2020, we can talk about that. And again, we appreciate doing this at a special meeting, where we can dedicate however much time we need. Prior to Eversource coming in next Tuesday night, as part of our normal agenda, regular meeting agenda, we'll also be available to answer questions about their operations. So that's sort of, we wanted to tee it up for you. We don't, we're just really more here to answer your questions, and obviously, it'll be a bit of a free-flowing conversation, because different departments all have a stake in this. So we'll try to answer your questions as, and field them as they come through.
So, Mike, originally, we sent over like some background, town background information, and then the topics that we wanted to kind of talk about in this discussion. So should we go through those? Have you guys pulled anything together prior to the meeting, or do you just kind of want to one-off them?
Well, we definitely have met internally about those questions, and Eversource also, the section where Evers, by the way, these were compiled questions from all of the councils. So Eversource has taken a look at their section, the town staff, we have the, the questions as well. I do have answers to some of the questions written down, but I think it would probably be better if we just kind of went through them and let people weigh in. And you, you may notice that the State Troopers Office is not here tonight. They were solicited as well as part of this, and I do have a couple of bullet points about them that I can share when that's appropriate to do so, about their, their emergency operations standards. So why don't we just go through the questions and let everybody sort of, you know, get into it?
Okay. Then I think we'll start out with the background questions that we had sent over. And some of these, I think, are pretty basic. So square miles of coverage, miles of road, number of households, and number of businesses. I think we're what, 40.6 square miles?
41 square miles with 132 miles of road, right, Scott?
Correct.
How many miles of road? 121?
132.
132. That includes all our gravel roads as well.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to check if my microphone was working. Yep.
You're working now, yep. Uh, number of households, we're about, what, 5,800? Close to?
I think that's right, 5,500, something like that, yep.
500. Do we know how many businesses?
That's a tough one, as talked about for other reasons, but somebody, I, I don't know, does anybody have a good, John, or anybody have a good listing of the businesses?
This is Brenda Felusi. It would depend on what you mean by businesses, because, you know, some of the, are we talking big Y area? Is that one, you know, if it's one building? Or are we talking about each individual business in there? You know, and are we talking about households, businesses, or something that might be out of a trailer or something at someone's house? You know, that it's fairly hard to quantify. Planning and zoning, tried to look at that a couple of times, but, you know, we do have a couple of areas that are more developed than others. You know, the number's hard to get.
I wouldn't include anyone that's in a household, because they would be captured in the household's number from an electricity perspective, but kind of freestanding businesses, I would think, but I can't confirm, because this was a conglomeration of everybody's questions, so.
Right. But when you're, when you're talking business, a loss of electricity, even if it's a home-based business, is going to impact that different than a household. So it's not just the delivery of the electricity to the, to the home, especially with some new legislation about what we could ask for, for reimbursement in case there is a loss of electricity. So home-based businesses might have a larger impact when you take a look at, look at it from a, you know, higher up than just being a deliverable.
The next questions, then. Scott, I think these are kind of more aimed at you. First off, what is our P, our Public Works makeup?
Well, we have, yep, we have, you know, multiple divisions. We have the Highway Division, which has 12 crew members, two mechanics, one public work supervisor. Parks and Facilities has nine crew members, one mechanic, a public work supervisor, one crew leader. Under Parks and Facilities fall our facility maintainers. We have one full-time, one part-time, and Operation Manager, which is Paul Russell. He oversees both divisions, as well as cemeteries, and he is Deputy Town Tree Warden. We have a Public Works Secretary, and then my position.
So crew, I would say, and crew in total, you, what, 21, 12 and?
20, yeah, 21 plus three mechanics.
Plus three. 21 crew total. If I'm getting anybody's questions wrong, please speak up. What were the hours worked in the last storm? And is that, and was that typical of a storm, winter or other season?
Well, I'm sure we all can agree that no two storms are alike. This one was a extremely windy storm, where our crews, the storm came in late in the afternoon. Our crews stayed on until approximately 10 o'clock that night. At that point, we had all the debris off the roads that we could touch. Standard operating procedure is that nobody touches anything with any wires, whether it's a telephone, cable, or power. So at that point, we were basically cleared of all of just debris, and the following morning, we had two crews from Eversource arrive. I believe they came at approximately 10:30 or 11 o'clock the next morning. And at that point, we assigned crews to work with them. So as they cut, they had a tree crew and a utility crew, and as they cut trees to free them from the wires, our crews pushed them off to the edge of the road.
You guys were working in concert with them?
Correct.
Okay. Do we plan for these types of hours? Are these typically like built into the budget for like X amount of storms, et cetera?
We, that's the way we handle our winter overtime. We, we go by a three- to five-year history as to how much, you know, how many events we had, what the hours are typically spent on each event. Events like this, it's, you know, really, it's the roll of the dice. We could, we've gone a few years without anything of this magnitude. We do use that same overtime budget for when we're doing paving, and we have to stay late while we're doing traffic control for the rollers and, and things like that. But it's typically for when we get called in for stop signs that are down, or, you know, things along those nature.
So overall, we do plan for some sort of storm?
Yes, for some, but it's very difficult to say, you know, how many storms you're going to have during the course of a year.
You'd be a weatherman if that was the case, wouldn't you be?
I'd be rich, because I could pick six numbers.
I could come be your secretary. What working agreements do we have with neighboring towns or utilities, et cetera?
As far as any working agreements, the, unfortunately, if we get hit with a storm like that, typically Coventry, Wellington, everybody is going to be in the same position. So it's not like we can rely on them for equipment. During the course of a normal year, you know, a normal weather, we have used equipment from different towns to help us get our work done quicker, such as a do-all, which is a machine that spreads material right out of the back of it. We used it for backfilling curbing and things like that. Unfortunately, with the pandemic that we have right now, it'd be very difficult to borrow anything, because we'd want to clean it when we got it, they'd want to clean when it went back, and it's just too risky to take any chances with things like that. But as far as emergencies go, what we plan for is, if we need to, we have contractors on call that have bigger loaders, for some reason, or we couldn't move the stuff, or ours broke down, we can reach out to different contractors and, you know, pay them at an hourly rate to come in and assist us.
And where would we pay for that out of?
I'd probably come see you guys, or that, or the declaration fund that, you know, and that's, that's only in an extreme case. We don't call people in unless we absolutely are at, you know, the end of the rope.
Right. So that would be like private-public partnership kind of stuff? Okay. The next question was, are we up to date on technology reporting and training? I'm not 100% sure. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Scott, for that one, you might want to talk a little bit about that GIS program that you guys are implementing about how, you know, with the iPads, you go out and punch in, where are those issues?
Yes. What we have is for each of the supervisors and myself, we all have iPads with a program on them that the the map of the town is located. It's it's on the this program. And as you're driving around town, when you come upon a site, if you hold your finger on the screen of the iPad, it will automatically log where you are. At that point, we have a drop down menu. It'll say wires down, wires and trees, one lane open, you know, one way only, you know, roadblock completely. And then from there, we're able to generate a spreadsheet, which will ultimately go to the E O C so that they can then code it knowing who has medical issues and they can prioritize it and then make it that much easier to send to ever source for them to start addressing. But it's in its infancy stage, you know, right now, we just got just got it off the ground. We're working on training, we're working on how we should be logging the information while out in the field. And it, you know, it it sounds pretty simple, but when trees are falling every which way, it's it's sometimes a mad scramble, as Paul can attest to.
So you just said something that kind of tickled my fancy there in relation to getting it over to the E O C so they could code it and prioritize it and send it to ever source. If I remember correctly, Mike, when we were talking to ever source and we were asking them about our prioritization list, they said they didn't care. They didn't use their prioritization list, like basically it was nothing that they worked off of.
Ever source, I mean, well, they'll be here to answer that question next week. I've talked to our representative about preparing for this question. They do have their own prioritization that goes with critical facilities, any sort of hospitals or would be at the top of the list or, you know, the perhaps the fire stations. They they can answer those questions, but they they're where they restore power is based on a mechanism that they do. I think it has to do with the most people that they can turn power back on for as quickly as possible, sort of the most bang for the buck, but they they can they can get into that next week. What I think what the value of what Scott's describing is we may be able to have a front facing iteration of this where if we know there's issues with roads closed, we might be able to get that up on the website and let people know. Is that right, Scott? We talked about that, right?
Yeah, what what we would be able to do is once we have this completely finalized, we would be able to put this up on our town webpage. So if, you know, a section of old post road is blocked and you're looking to go through that area, you'd be able to go on the map and see that the road has been opened. One lane, it's still closed. And it would be updated probably like at ten o'clock at night and then probably at six o'clock again the next morning and then throughout the day. But it certainly, I don't foresee it being updated every hour on the hour throughout the night. You know, after ten o'clock, most people aren't going to be out traveling on the roads, at least older people like me.
I I do like the sounds of that. I like the the having that list up there for people because that was a lot of the questions that we got or people saying, you know, my road's not on this list. So at that point, I guess we could talk about how you could, Mike, if we had like the the site available to report issues. Remember, we talked about moving that around possibly.
It's there, it's it's up already on the web, on the front page.
Yeah, so if they could then say, you know, my road's not on this list, hit a here's where my issue is. Then Scott, you guys could go out there, log it, get it on the list at the next opportune moment.
Right.
Okay. So technology reporting and training, we're feeling okay with that there.
I have a hand raised, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Thank you, I'll just jump in. So with with this idea of the iPads and all that, is is there a plan for that to be or more iPads purchased in the future and given to the fire department? They guys have guys driving around all the time and kind of help streamline everyone's reporting? Or is that, has that been discussed yet? I don't know.
Again, this is, this is in its infancy. We're we're trying to get all the bugs worked out and then we'll see how we expand on it from there.
Sorry, my dog is barking. All right, now that covers public works. I think we're gonna have to go back over these again with public safety. But the last question on here is, are we adequately staffed slash trained in our emergency response?
I guess, I'm not sure who the best person to answer that. I mean, I could say that for my, well, I've been here thirteen months, but also just in the past seven months of working in an emergency operations mode, which has ebbed and flowed as, you know, COVID has come out, broken and then, you know, come down and might be trending higher again. We, you know, emergency response is something that every town municipal government has to do and be prepared for. We, you know, we were not alone in this. Obviously, the whole world is engaged in this at the moment. But I feel that we do have very, you know, committed department heads, especially the 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 main ones that deal with emergencies are obviously John and Scott and Lisa with with financing on the backend, trying to get reimbursements. You know, we have the right team for for where we are right now. And, you know, I I I've been trained in incident command, which I've embraced over the past seven months. Yeah, I I guess maybe in theory, you know, John and I talked about this earlier. If we could have more department heads trained on it, that would be useful. I know Lisa's a master in it. I think Lisa has the most training in I C S besides maybe John Laitel. But so I think we, you know, we would want, we we're we're doing what we can. I I guess in terms of emergency response, we're all trying to wear our emergency hats as well as doing our day to day jobs as well. But the one tricky thing about the COVID nineteen pandemic is that whereas you might be able to get everybody into the E O C and triage something and sort of make your E O C into a think tank, we were never able to do that because of social distancing. So instead, we had to start doing these remote E O C calls on Zoom, which is not quite the same as being in the same room and kind of, you know, feeling out a situation and having whiteboards up and everything. But I would say that, you know, maybe with a little bit more training, we we might be able to get a little bit more streamlined as a as an overall town. I mean, none of us have ever dealt with anything like this before. We're we're kind of writing the book right now on it. And in terms of even like, you know, think about the pandemic and then on top of that, the tropical storm we had and, you know, it's it's two states of emergency on top of each other that are now stacked. So we're in this whole new world right now where we're trying to figure out how to have a virtual E O C. But we've we've been pretty good about doing that. You know, and I think having John as our E M D is very valuable. And I know he he should get credit for that, that he's he does well with emergency mode. And it's unfortunate that we've had about seven months straight now of emergencies. So it's a it's a tough hat that he has to wear. I don't know if anybody else wants to jump in on this one, but I do think that we have a very good team for where, you know, for the size that we are and and what we're trying to do for this town and try to stay on top of trends as well as, you know, keeping everybody safe. I I'm proud to say that we have had no issues at town hall and and in the other departments.
So so what does that more training look like? And how do we, how do we help facilitate that? What would that be?
The only thing I could think of, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would we would probably want all department heads trained on NIMs and I C S, just so everybody knows when they would jump into an emergency mode. So we we did assign section chiefs. We had a logistics section chief, we had a finance, we had operations, we had an incident commander. We tried to follow the NIMs model. It's tough though, too, when, you know, we're every, we're just a couple of people and we're trying to do everything to 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 manage the storm and to manage the COVID pandemic while also trying to do our day jobs, so to speak. So it's, you know, the the training is there. Unfortunately, it's very difficult to do these I C S trainings because they're three day classes. And I don't know if they, I don't know if John or anybody knows, but they're generally done in person. I know when I took I C S three hundred, it was a three day in person class a few years ago. They haven't run one of those now since since COVID. Is that right, John?
Yes, sir. So basically, the I S seven hundred is the first class. And then obviously, it leads into I S one hundred and two hundred, which is online. Those are all free classes that anyone can take. Obviously, I've tried to send out all the links to all the departments and everyone, including the schools, to try to best train them or get them to understand how I C S works. So when you as the boss declares a state of emergency, everyone knows where to fall into as far as their chain of command and their different responsibilities throughout the town, which which even includes civic organizations, churches, volunteer groups. You know, we've used the Boy Scouts and we've used other groups in town as well. So the I S seven hundred, one hundred and two hundred are obviously basics. And once you start getting into the one hundred and two hundred, you you understand it more of when a an emergency happens and and, you know, how it flows and the chain of command and internal functions. And then it leads to external functions, which relates back to, from a municipality standpoint, then it relates back to shared resources from different communities and what powers you have. And then it even further reaches into when you get into the three hundred, four hundred and then the eight hundred, which I always encourage everyone to take in order because it just flows. A lot of our cert members have gone through the numerous trainings and it's very painful, some of them. But as you get through it, it's it's more understanding and you understand it. If you jump from seven hundred to one hundred and then take the eight hundred, the national incident management, well, you you left out the ballpark. So it's easier to make it flow. And then we always, or the state or the federal level always encourages that any department head should be one level ahead of their subordinates of who they supervise. So yes, it's very tough for me to to go all the way to the to the national level. But that's kind of how it flows and, you know, incident command is not just for emergencies. It could be used for any type of internal, external planning, even when it comes to budgeting. It takes a, it takes a great finance manager like we have Lisa to get the department heads together and put their pieces of pie together because everyone's got to complete the circle. So if that makes sense, I mean, we all are trying to fight for the same end goal. So that's how we try to work and it takes a team to make it happen.
Yeah, and then in terms of the staffing aspect of the question too. So this again goes to the whole, we can't have, especially back in March and April, who's coming back in, sorry. Especially back in March and April, when we were still figuring this thing out, we weren't able to have the E O C staffed with bodies. You know, we were still making sure we had the minimal amount of people. I think at the low point, it was five people total in a room together spaced out by more than six feet. So people, you know, whereas in an E O C and a John, you did a great job with your staff setting up the E O C with all the signs hanging and everything where people would normally sit around the computers. You'd have the troopers, you'd have, you know, you'd you'd have finance down there. We weren't really able to do that because we could only have five people in a room down there. So you was really a lot of you and your staff managing the E O C day to day while we were still, you know, going through the, we had the E O C calls, but the physical E O C was only staffed by a handful of people.
And just to bring you up to speed, you know, Tammy and fellow council members, when I took over in two thousand as the chief, obviously, I had all the training and everything before that. But I was hit with September eleventh. And that was the same instance where I didn't know what to do and where to go from and trying to get all the town department heads together and all the resources as far as what was facing us, as far as collection points and everything else. And we did phenomenal as a town and a community. So from there, obviously, from two thousand, you know, from September eleven, two thousand and one, the last really height and concern that we really had back in two thousand and eight and seven or seven and eight was the Ebola. And that could have been a huge financial impact to lose personnel or even ambulances of where that was taking off. And I think that's the last time I really approached the council for something big that could have happened. And maybe if I approached them and did something, maybe we would have had more P P E to to deal with the COVID. But we didn't pull the plug. And then obviously, we got overindated in two thousand and ten and eleven. Talon's always known for microbursts and a lot of storms or road closures. I will tell you that one of the big pet peeves back in, you know, two thousand and ten was people thought that I bought snowmobiles and I rented them. So, you know, and once that declaration occurs, I have the empowerment under the C E O and, you know, the the higher ups to empower any type of emergency asset that I need, whether it be a bulldozer from another community or loader, other resources. But it starts locally and then I have obviously county plans and then I obviously have regional plans. So you guys are kind of a caveat. And like, you know, Mr. Rosen said, it's fortunate that unfortunately, I hold too many titles and too many hats. But I'm also your county coordinator for twenty four, five, twenty five towns now. So trying to maintain a list of twenty five different departments and resources for emergency services and organizations is is taxing. But and then we reach out to the region. So once a state emergency happens, obviously, the state E O C activates. They look at different municipalities to activate their E O C depending on what type of emergency. Some towns activate, some towns, a lot of times do it, what they call monitoring. But as far as staffing, we've been, we've been after this since two thousand and ten, eleven and and no disrespect to everyone that's here or anybody else that's past or present. But there's never enough staff, depending on the nature of the emergency or the duration of the event. I've burnt a lot of people out over from two thousand and ten, eleven to where we are today. I've burnt a lot of people out, I've lost a lot of good people. And there's some of us that are still here. But I can tell you that it's no difference in what the Connecticut State Police are going through with the major retirement and bringing a lot of new people in and not having people that are trained or accustomed to a lot of devastation disasters or anything else wise. And if we look across the the nation as a, as a, you know, as a society, it's only getting worse from state to state, county to county and everywhere elsewise. So fortunate that my young, my young cousin is out there in California, still jumping out of airplanes into California wildfires. But, you know, we could end up facing something in nature that down the road here because of our drought situation in the eastern part and everything else up here. And then when you get your storm disasters similar to Mounds and Mass, those hangers and that brush and the stuff that's in the woods just become tenders. And, you know, it could end up happening and and moving in that direction. So from a duration of a storm event, it could be a windstorm, it could be a snow event. It takes a lot of hours and a lot of people. So we do need more people. And obviously, like Mr. Rosen said, the COVID has really seriously thrown us for a curve ball. I can remember working with Mr. Miller, Rob Miller, from the Eastern Health Highlands District. We went through a panemdemic emergency operation plan about nine years ago. And we do have a plan, whether it be people will be bust out of Talon for a mass vaccination, which site we pick and where we're going. We ran a couple drills and scenarios and we reached out to many civic organizations and and the volunteer list was up over three hundred and fifty people. Do you think out of the three hundred and fifty volunteers, the people when that epidemic hit, that you had a lot of people that signed that, you know, originally signed up, came out to say, yeah, I'll be there for eight hours or seven hours? No, they were home taking care of their families or their loved ones or anything elsewise. So we're not the only community that faces that. It's a, it's something that we have to look at and do some cross training and do some scenarios to have backup. So, you know, certain department heads can go home at ten o'clock at, you know, at night and bring in a second shift or bring in the next shift for the next couple of days because you can't do, when we get to storm duties, you can't, you can't keep pushing the eighty four, eighty five hours like some of us have been pushed out through the last storms of the COVID stuff. It takes a taxing and a wear. And unfortunately, then other paperwork or other things that need to get addressed don't get addressed because once the lights go back on, everybody thinks we're back to normal. We're still picking up our boots. So that kind of gives an overview if that answers your questions.
Yeah, I have, before we get to Lou and Steve, Lou dropped off then came back on. So before we get to Lou and Steve, you mentioned something there, John, that if you, if you could give us a maybe like a quick rundown on, you had mentioned that you have twenty five towns underneath you now for the emergency, the E M D position. So.
So that doesn't come on the E M D position. That comes on the Talon County Mutual Aid Fire Service, which we are contracted with, that we pay for dispatching services. So twenty six towns use the Talon County Mutual Aid Fire Service for nine one one dispatching. And how that works out is they have a president and a board of directors that municipalities pay for dispatching fees. And from there, they actually appoint a coordinator, which then I have five deputy coordinators underneath me, which then ties into a major hazmat plan, the dive rescue plan, and now the E E C, which is a tactical emergency casualty care that I've been working hard for the last four to five years to get towns trained with bulletproof vests in active shooter situations. So that's a, that's a united front through the fire service wise, if that makes sense.
So that's not something. So that's not something like in the middle of the storm, you're not planning for Talon and twenty four other towns also.
No, but it depends on the resources and and how taxed out it is. So like when we had the COVID, I ran Zoom meetings with the county for about five months because the Talon County Mutual Aid Fire Service couldn't host their in person meetings similar to your council meetings. So I I hosted the Zoom meetings with, oh, about, I had about thirty six people, thirty eight people every single time on the Zoom meetings to say, hey, how's your P P E? How's your, how's your staff? How, you know, do you have people out? Can you not handle, can you not handle ambulance calls? What are you doing? And that's where we came up and we put a plan together that we actually stole and borrowed Massachusetts and a few other states. We borrowed their plan to put a staffing resource plan together, meaning that if Talon got hit with COVID and we had no career staffing or we had no volunteers that could staff the ambulance during a daytime or during hours, that we could share personnel across the board. And that's a that's a county plan that I we ended up putting together with a lot of the fire chiefs.
Okay, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That, yeah, I would, I would agree basically with what John is Chief Lightell and Mr. Rosen been saying where I think it's something that as far as for additional training and additional staffing that we need to have like basically two to three levels deep. And then I think that everybody that would be involved in any type of emergency response on the town end, that inside their job description should be basically what type of training that they're expected to have on the I C S level. So that people could, I mean, there's a lot of things that were online as far as I C S training for their, for different, different section heads for under the I C S and Unified Command System where they can get that specifically. So not everyone may need three, three and three hundred and four hundred level training, but at least they can do some of the other training online that that wouldn't require the three day commitment or four day commitment to get that three hundred, four hundred level. But at least that way they would be familiar so that you could have, like, instead of relying on the on the department heads all the time, having somebody else that can as an appointee take over that, like, you know, if you have to go to twenty four seven operations, you you can have somebody, we can actually maintain that and have people fill in that. And they, it doesn't need to be like the actual town department heads that are that are the only ones there. They can have other people underneath them, the assistants, even section chief, something like that, where they could get that level of train.
He froze. Mike, do you want to, do you want to try to take that while he's frozen like that on screen?
Yeah, it's and and maybe Mike Wilkinson can help me out too because I know he's on the line. But I know if we were to start building these into job descriptions, I know we would have to obviously amend all the job descriptions. It might be the time to do that might be if we were doing like an overarching update to all job descriptions in town to say, okay, this position requires I C S seven hundred or one hundred or whatever. The other thing too to consider is that with the department heads, for the most part, you're not dealing with unionized staff. So there are more flexibility in hours and things. So if you were asking like for a weekend event or Friday, because town halls are closed on Friday, it's the department heads were the ones who are generally going to be responding off hours because otherwise you would have, you know, obviously, union issues. But maybe, Mike, can you back me up on that? I'm not sure if that's accurate. I think you're muted if you're there. Oh, I guess he's not there.
I was gonna say, I don't see Mike on.
It taught, well, I think he's the other Talon Zoom meeting person. He just might not be at his keyboard. But that that was my two cents on it. I think analysts, maybe Lisa, that you would agree with that too. I know just for what it's worth too, during during the COVID, Lisa actually had a couple of her staff go down and 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 spend a day at the E O C to kind of get some just experience down there. You know, just because of the nature of this, again, the COVID emergency, people were obviously hesitant. But Lisa's staff did go down, I just wanted to call that out.
I'm gonna get you in one second, Steve. I'm of the mindset, I don't know about anybody else, but I think when we have a storm or an event like that, that it's all hands on deck. So if we think we're going to get pushed back from the union, I find that very discouraging. Now, I don't know what we can do about that, but as town government, you know, I think it's a lot to put on Kelly and Betty, Betsy to, or, you know, even just from an admin perspective or everybody else in that, like, you know, it needs to be when there's an emergency, all hands on deck. So if there's a way to kind of look at getting, we would have to change job descriptions if we say that they have to do this training?
Well, if you if you wanted to update the job descriptions, as Lou had suggested, to actually build it in to everyone's job descriptions as like a, as a requisite of the job, I think you would need to bargain that or at least get that as part of an overall job update for everybody, job description update if we were going to do that across the board. If you remember, every time we have a vacancy, we bring the position to council to look at the job description and to make any edits to it before it gets posted. So we could, in theory, start rolling that as part of it. Or that it would also require some, you know, thinking about which positions would require I C S training or just to say across the board, everybody needs to do seven hundred and one hundred just as part of being in municipal government. Because whether you're the town manager, the D P W director, or perhaps even a custodian, you may need to use, and and you may need to use I C S training. You never know, everybody's important in a state of emergency.
I agree.
So years, years ago, Tammy, the presidential declaration that came out encouraged every municipality to put in their town ordinances or the charters to adopt the National Incident Management System. Because the big thing that was coming back in two thousand ten and nine was that they could challenge the municipality if the town didn't have the appropriate staffing for funding and reimbursements. So that's when we made it a part of all our job descriptions of, you know, fire service wise, emergency personnel wise, that even like today, we don't take a volunteer, we just voted in eight UConn students the other night. And we did not vote them in until they had at least a seven hundred and one hundred training. And we just, you know, it's something that we require right up front. And it's something that I tried to get that into ordinance years ago and it just never passed or a part of. But it's not something out of the ordinary that a lot of other municipalities already have a part of their their ordinances or charter plans as a requirement. And when you speak as far as the union stuff, unfortunately, Walt's done a, you know, Walt's tried as hard as he can. But a lot of times you got to keep in mind that we got to include all facets of government, including the school systems because our schools are a part of the shelters. And Walt's tried hard, but we would end up using their cooking staff. And, you know, we tried to work out some plans with their cooking staff as far as, you know, whether they be using the food or the kitchens or even the gymnasium or some of the office staffing for making copies. But all the schools are kind of classified in every municipality as a shelter is the main operation. And, you know, it'd be nice to have some of their staffing as well, trained across the board to, you know, help us out because poor Babelity does not like to stay sometimes at nighttime for shelter stuff. She was originally the shelter manager years ago and we've tried to train a lot of our certain members to kind of try to take over that aspect of it. But that whole other aspect is even changed now with the COVID. When it comes time for a major disaster, everyone thinks the safeguard is Red Cross is coming in to save and have enough people. They don't, they they just don't. Obviously, we try to push people to a regional shelter first versus opening up a school for four or five people. But, you know, the the overall game plan for the community here is, you know, we have some weaknesses and some items and needs or whatever. But if there's anything I can help out with, we can always post it. And I and I know even a lot of our volunteers that signed up for the COVID actually even signed up and took the training and found it very knowledgeable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think that this needs to be handled as an all hands on deck thing, but myself, but that's, that's me. Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones, I've got a quick question of Scott, if he, if he knows kind of looking back on the storm, if a lot of the trees that were maybe on schedule for removal kind of got themselves taken care of by the storm? Or as a result, was there suddenly kind of an increase in your, you're now probably extensive queue of trees that were either at risk or now at an even higher risk that need to be cut down? And I'm driving around the town, I've definitely seen a lot more in trees that are slated by the ward and be cut down.
Yeah, Steve, believe it or not, when discussing this with Paul, because he is, he's been very active in getting the the diseased ash trees taken down. I said, did we have any luck losing any? And it didn't appear as though we lost any ash trees. We lost numerous other trees, but we still have that that whole population of diseased and dying ash trees that Paul has been pretty aggressively tagging and dealing with our tree contractor to get removed.
Okay, and then I guess probably this this kind of might blend into a conversation that we'll have next week as well with EverSource. But I definitely have also been noticing right around my neck of the woods that Asplunda and EverSource have been out cleaning up and taking care of branches overhanging in the the wires. Have they been in good contact with you since the storm and afterwards in terms of their their maintaining or their maintenance plans and schedules to try and trim back any branches? Like making sure if they're going around that they're not maybe touching your trees or maybe encouraging them to take down some of the trees that you're planning to take down if they're out that way?
They were, they were very good about maintaining contact with with Paul during the the storm. But as far as cleaning up, they, you know, they didn't have utility crews. Some of the trucks that were in were utility crews. Most of them are tree trimming crews from Asplund. And they've been given a list from EverSource as to where the the hazardous trees are. We went out off of Old Stafford Road and they had a section probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet long with hangers. And that's, that's all they were doing was taking them down and chipping them. And when it comes to routine, what they would consider routine maintenance, such as that after a storm, they really don't notify us. They're very good about coming in if they have a plan where they're going to replace some of their infrastructure, they'll come in typically, they reach out to the town manager and then we get involved and they'll come in with a plan and say, okay, this is what our plan is. We're going to start around here, this is what it's going to entail. But when it comes to, and I'm not minimizing it, but what they would consider little stuff such as these hangers, they really don't involve us.
Okay, yeah, it seems like at least for our area, they just reached out to all the neighbors and just asked for digital confirmation. But now that, excuse me, I think of one other thing, the on Old Stafford Road, there is that area that's kind of like a parking areas and staging areas. Is that primarily used by the town or is that sometimes shared with EverSource in terms of, I think there's a bunch of catch basins? And there's usually a few trucks parked there. There's a rear section along Old Stafford that's, it seems like it's been cleared out a little bit more recently.
Are you referring to our transfer station, which is?
Yeah, it's kind of closer to the Charter Road, kind of going uphill on your left if you're going towards the green.
Yeah, what we have, that's where we keep our stock for catch basin, parts, pipe, things like that. We also have some dumpsters in there for when we get a phone call saying somebody threw a couch out on the side of road or there's trash, we'll pick it up and we'll put it in there until they're full and then we have it hauled out. The tree company that it's in there is the Town Tree Contractor. And that's, that's part of the bid. We provide them a place to leave their vehicle, which it it helps us considerably because their vehicle is already here. So if we have an issue, they're right in town when they get it. They don't have to go to Manchester or West Hartford, wherever they're coming from. It it's worked in our favor for years.
Okay, no, that's good, great, thank you.
Sure.
Sorry, I was on mute. So that gets us to, kind of leads us right into the next section here. And again, if anybody has, this was part of their questions and want to elaborate, please jump in. But town topics, tree trimming, preventative actions, and I'm not quite sure on this one, but percentage, percent of tree coverage of town. So I guess from the tree trimming perspective and preventive actions here, what is the plan? I know we've got money in the budget for tree trimming, but I'm not a hundred percent sure what this whole one everybody's was here. Preventive actions, like can we do any preventive actions in light of the storm? And then, I don't know, the percent of tree coverage of the town. I would assume a lot, we've got a lot of trees, we have a lot of trees in town.
Yeah, from, from what I could see using our G I S maps, we're probably at sixty to seventy percent tree coverage. You figure you have to take out the roads, take out the, you know, the the homes, the their properties along with the municipal and Board of Ed properties. As far as preventive actions, we have to give EverSource credit. They've been very aggressive with their trimming. The issue, they can only go back so far. And even if they go back twenty feet from a power line, if you have a forty or fifty four, a forty or fifty foot tall tree in that, you know, just on that twenty foot border and that comes down, it's still going to take down power lines. As far as our tree trimming goes, we were fortunate that you folks appropriated seventy thousand dollars for tree trimming along with the thirty that we have in our budget. So we have approximately a hundred thousand dollars that is slated for these diseased trees and and the removal of them, along with when we have storm issues and things like that. Or we come across a different tree, it doesn't have to be a dying ash tree, it can be a tree that's somewhere else. And Paul is, like I say, Paul's been on top of that. He spends a, an awful lot of time on trees and cemetery issues.
Hopefully, we made that a little easier. So in relation to that, I know in the past I've heard that we use a, we use somebody to do the trees and it's pretty expensive. So that doesn't, like, thirty thousand dollars doesn't get us a lot of trees. Is there anything that we can be doing in house that would save us from having a contract with this?
We do, especially, you know, within the next month or so. What we do is we have our crews go out and drive their snowplow roots. And while they're driving the routes, they're, they're driving as close to the edge of the road as they can. And you're seeing what trees are overhanging. And if these are things that we can get either using our own tree truck, which is not in the best of shape, we spend probably four to five thousand dollars on that every year, having bushings redone. And it has to be tested to make sure that it's it's a safer operation. Either that or we're we're out with hydraulic cutters or or chainsaws, removing things that are going to do damage to the trucks, the mirrors, things like that. Other than that, it's the guys, most of, by guys, I'm saying everybody inclusively. It's, it's, they're trained in in chainsaw safety. We we provide everybody with chainsaw pants, the proper P P E that they need to go out and and perform this work. It's just that to try to put somebody in a bucket truck who doesn't do it on a daily basis, it's nowhere near as efficient as the the service we get out of the tree, our tree contractor. We go out to bid every, well, this time it was a one year bid with a two year extension after each year, only because we never know whether we're going to be funded that that money again the next year, and I can't do a two or a three year bid. So we have to do one year and then what we do is ask what the percentage increase will be for the next year or the year after that. And that gives us an idea for budgeting purposes. But when you have a professional crew out there, they, they, they can take trees down very quickly and reduce them by, you know, getting them into a chipper or whatever.
Anybody have any other questions on this that they feel have not been answered?
This is Brenda Felucy. Is there any awareness program or tree care programs that is shared? Like graphics online or that we should share with homeowners about being able to recognize trees on their own property that are becoming either diseased or too dry, especially with the drought coming on? And how they can proactively take care of, you know, something that would help prevent them from experiencing a power outage?
We get, we get numerous phone calls from residents saying that they have trees either that look like they're dying or whatever over their service lines coming onto the property. And up until, I believe it was like two years, maybe three years ago, those phone calls went right to EverSource and EverSource would summon somebody out. Now they say that they don't do that work anymore. It's up to the homeowner to contract with a tree contractor. And unfortunately, you know, a lot of people are in a position where And unfortunately, you know, a lot of people are in a position where they have other priorities besides worrying about that tree. And it's it kind of goes by the wayside. We can't, as I was previously a tree warden in the municipality I worked for before, I'm deputy tree warden here along with Paul. We can't tell somebody, we can notify them that their tree is hazardous and it should be taken down, but we can't force them to do it. But what it does is it takes the liability off of us, knowing that if this tree falls in the street, we we can say we notified them the tree needed to come down. And unfortunately, it comes down to dollars and cents and if they can't afford to have a tree taken down.
Right, but is there a way that, I mean, there's going to be residents out there who are not looking up, who aren't looking at their trees. What I'm trying to do is find a way to make people aware that they should be checking on their own trees and how to recognize a potential issue and address it prior to it becoming a large issue. You know, not, I'm not asking you guys to go on someone's property and take care of, you know, their issues. I'm asking, you know, how do we train homeowners or notify homeowners, renters, whoever? How do we teach them to to be on the lookout for those sort of things?
I guess I guess what I would suggest is that maybe, you know, between Paul and myself and even Bill Pecul, as we reach out to Connecticut Tree Wardens Association, see if they have any guidance as far as what people should be looking for. I mean, we can tell them, yeah, go out and look and see if you have a tree that doesn't have, it leaves on in in June. And, you know, we're pretty sure that was a dead one. But, you know, besides that, I certainly don't want to tell somebody they've got to go cut down. They must treat it, you know?
Exactly. And that's not, that's not what I was looking for. I was just looking for, you know, ways we can help educate homeowners about the potentials of trees, how they could recognize issues. And maybe if there's something that they can do proactively before, you know, they recognize a branch is to what to do before it becomes the whole tree, that sort of thing. So.
Well, I I know Paul is on and Paul has gone through the tree warden class. I believe it was three, two, three years ago. I went back in 2002. So Paul, feel free to chime in if you're aware of anything that has come up more recently for addressing something like this.
Hey, Paul.
You're muted.
You have to unmute, Paul.
There you go.
Uh, I don't know of anything like that. Like Scott said, I think it's a good idea. We can look into the association to see if they have something like that. But as far as I know right now, as far as educating the homeowner, there's nothing that I've seen.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point, Brenda, because I know I've had to have three trees taken down because of the gypsy moth. And it's cost me about $3,000 to get those trees taken down, which is it's an unwieldy amount for people to to have to, a thousand dollars around their tree is a lot of money.
Right.
And then my other question was, tomorrow we're getting a wind event. Can you very briefly go over, you know, what you what you do for public works and for public safety to prepare and notify even the the residents so that, you know, they're ready? They've taken in their, you know, their umbrellas, their movable furniture, whatever, taking a look at the trees to make sure they don't have any loose things unexpected. Notice, you know, whatever it is that you guys do to prepare for a wind event or another storm event. I think that's helpful for people to hear about.
Ours is more internal. We'll we'll go out, we'll make sure that all the generators are topped off in case we have loss of power. All our vehicles are topped off. We have at least one, if not two people in each division going through all the chainsaws, sharpening, making sure the chains are tight and making sure that we have enough barricades on trucks so that in the event that we start to lose trees, they're able to just be dispatched right to the site. As far as notification, as to, you know, things of where they should be bringing things in, that's not really something that we get in. I know John is very good about sending out notifications and updates from that he gets from Demus. And I don't know whether that's something that they cover, but it's not something that we typically do.
Yeah, Brenda, like Scott said, we do the same with our staffing. They obviously load up and change out all the caves and gas cans. And, you know, unfortunately, there's many times when it's going to be a, you know, if we, it looks like a bad event. We obviously take a lot of more gas cans and fill up the gas cans just to prepare. We did have to buy a couple of generators over the last couple of storms, portable ones, in case that something would happen with the special needs or something else wise. And actually had to replace one of the small ones for the dog pound as well. So something that we try to send out messages, we try to get it out. I have a few new members that are handling the social media, which are doing a phenomenal job. If you noticed the last couple of days, if some of yous are not signed up on Talon Alert, they're doing a phenomenal job with sending stuff out. They actually just cleared Cozy Road just about 45 minutes ago. And that was a damaged tree limb that unfortunately came down and closed that section of the road out for a couple, for the last couple of hours. So we try to send out the messages we can and we try to get it out. But, you know, we try to encourage the Journal Inquirer or the Talent Patch or other ones to, like we've always told them, if we post a picture, if we post a message, it's free to use. Send it, use it, get the message out there. So, you know, between the mass notification list I have and, you know, the 425 businesses that are on it and, you know, the other department heads or schools, I try to send out all that updates. As far as even lately, I've even switched some of the mass notifications around because some people are getting tired because I think of the COVID messages. So some people have opted out to not follow follow the messages anymore. But we try to send it out through mass notifications and Talon Alerts. And then we go from there, obviously. You know, the problem, the problem is we can send out all the pre-warning messages, but I just don't have the staffing once we get overindated. The last couple of storms, a lot of my social media guys or a couple of my fire guys, they're on the road. They're, you know, they're they're on the road and like, you know, I think Kurt asked before, it's between personal cell phones or the other aspects of trying to send messages and trying to trying to build a database up and then trying to capture those photos or those images to, you know, build. But that's kind of how we get the messages out. We try to, we try to do the best we can. I know some people have asked to use the EverBridge message again. But the last couple of messages that we did, unfortunately, we didn't have too many people that called. But, you know, between the messages of those EverBridge people, we, they try to think of that as an emergency message, I guess. So they get panicked sometimes and and some of the four older people, they'll end up calling back the phone numbers or, you know, starting to email or calling our training center, which one of my huge goals this year here is to straighten out the phone system in the town because you can't remember a seven-digit number. So when you dial eight seven one three six seven seven or even the schools or the other towns, it's hard to say, okay, I gotta dial extension seven two one five two. They lose out on that. So one of the goal messages is hopefully I can get a pre-recorded message where someone wanted a pre war, you know, storm warning or something else, or to have a couple of safety tips or websites or something to go to. So we're trying to build it up. It's just hard finding the staff to to keep up the messaging that I send out or, you know, to post it somewhere. So we're doing the best that we can. And then if it's after hours, if it's a Friday, town hall's closed. And if it's a Saturday or Sunday, it's hard to get the messages out either up on the Facebooks or the other messages. So it's one of those things, you know, social media is good, but once you start it, you gotta, you gotta try to maintain it because then you lose a following.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Steve.
I was just going to add as also a little point information is that EverSource does provide tree assessment opportunities. If you want to call them, I believe they're not doing digital forms. It's more for trees that are directly either impacting, like chafing the wires or leaning towards the, if it's a branch or if it's the actual tree. I actually went through that process earlier this year when they were installing the poles. It was even before they were going to do them, I had a tree that was definitely, that was impacting the wires. I put out a form on my doorknob. They grabbed it. Within three weeks, they came back and removed the tree and cut it up into logs that I could reuse. But and then I think they kind of lightened up on it. But with the storm, I think there's a chance for residents, if they go to EverSource and request a tree assessment, if you call their main line, they could probably have someone come out while they're doing tree trimming across the town or across a neighborhood and assess whether or not they've removed it for you. But yeah, I think lately it's been really, they only want to do the work if they know it's going to impact it from a storm. And otherwise, they're just going to tell you to go to the arborists. But definitely something to utilize if you want to avoid paying for an arborist yourself is to to reach out to them and try and make the make the point that, you know, the next Isaiah is this could fall across the road and, you know, make a lot of trouble for EverSource.
Okay. Next item on our list here is response time. What is our expected response time? And then the utility's expected response time?
On this, this past storm, obviously, our response time was excellent. We had held all our crews. But a typical storm, if we're not in, our, most of our guys are expecting, they they know what's going on. And they're back in and ready to go within 30 minutes or so. Again, most people are expecting that phone call. They're sitting there waiting for it. Supervisor gets notified, Paul calls the other two supervisors, and they start making their phone calls. Our park supervisor, Dennis, has everybody on a group and he sends a text to everybody at once and says, need you to come in. And then they start responding to him. So as far as that response time goes, we're pretty good. EverSource, they they did what they could. We, you really couldn't fault them for anything. I know people don't like the inconvenience, obviously, of losing power or being without power for, you know, more than a little bit. But when they came in, they had, they had some good crews working here. And, you know, again, Paul can attest to that. He was working side by side with at least one of the crews. And our other supervisors were with the other ones. They just kept moving.
Does that cover what anybody else had?
Are you talking in general response time or are you talking for the last storm?
I just said response time. Our expected response, I would say probably in general. And then like, you know, I thought we did a good job in the last storm. I think our guys all did what they could as quick as they could. And then we waited for EverSource. And, you know, EverSource was on top of it, but they were also behind it. So a little bit of frustration there. But from a typical, from a typical storm, I guess what I'm hearing then is the way that the it's kind of like a phone tree is handled, that within like 30 minutes, everybody's notified and is on their way in.
Correct.
John, is it different in, different for you guys?
Uh, depending on the situation, I mean, a lot of times we might be out ahead and calling depending on the situation. You know, a lot of times it might be one or two, and sometimes they end up going out. Sometimes in the middle of night that the state police will call them for something that they'll bring a crew in to clear a road or a tree or something else. But we try to work hand in hand, which we normally do. Usually Paul's texting me, I'm calling Paul or vice versa. But as far as EverSource's response times, I don't think you can grid lock that. So just for your, for your history building lesson, obviously, back in 1993 or '04, the fire service created and worked with the EverSource. And back then, it was a CLMP task force to create a level one, level two, and a level three. This was after the Summers firefighter was killed in a incident with a live fire, a live line and a fire. So from there, EverSource created a a level signal, a level one, level two, and a level three. So depending on the nature of a windstorm or an event, if you have a lot of level one priorities or a level two priorities, you won't see your normal EverSource reps coming in through town to clear a road or to be there. So in average time, sometimes in the middle of night, we've sometimes, we like to leave crews on the scene, whether it be fire police or something else, if a live line's down or a tree. But I can tell you that during this, a couple of weeks ago, the town of Stafford was on scene for 12 hours waiting for an EverSource rep with a live line on a major state road. So depending on the situations, it all varies. But from a storm aspect, back in 2010 and 11, they started creating a plan, which is a Make Safe Plan. Mr. Rosen's first meeting, I think he came to town, we were at the, we were at one of the state sites for a meeting. And one of their EverSource reps was there and they were getting back into the Make Safe. And I believe that EverSource will acknowledge that the Make Safe needs to be reviewed, needs to be reviewed and refreshed because we actually even held demos in town here. And I think Paul's on the line, you can correct me if I'm wrong or not, but I think it was about eight, nine years ago was the last big Make Safe drill that we did with the power companies of how to make a roadway safe and and having an EverSource rep to get at least a one lane or something opened. So I think they, that will probably come out in a future PIRA hearing. As far as their level response on this one, Mr. Rosen has my documents and records. And I think we'd rather hold that as far as what their level response was on this last storm because there were two level ones in Talon that were not met to the expectations. And we're just waiting to review those, I think, at a later date. Is that enough said, Mike?
Well, yeah, I mean, we made it known that we were very displeased with the the couple of, you know, the ones that you just mentioned, the level ones. I I mentioned it during that press briefing back in August, how there was a, I forget the exact scenario, but live wires on a car and somebody was trapped. So we, you know, we just, it's something that we we let them know and regionally, because there was a lot of towns that were at that press conference. But, you know, again, we also want to just mention that after the initial prodding, they did, they did step up and what could have been a two-week outage, it was only a six or seven-day outage. So, you know, they they did. And that's something we can talk about next week about how i- is that good for a town like Talon? Six or seven days, is that acceptable for a town like us? You know, that's that's something that we should talk to them about next week.
And that's something that you just got, you can't get tunnel vision. So when an EverSource response, you might have an EverSource vehicle come out here. So Opus Road, one of your big items on Opus Road, you have two pieces of fiber that come down Opus Road. One's a state fiber and one's a town fiber. When those are down on the ground, EverSource will not touch them. They will not put them back up on a pole. Frontier lines are a whole different aspect. So frontier lines can be down in a roadway for anywhere between 14 and 18 hours and can have that road shut down. Frontier is a different animal. And obviously Frontier is working very hard because they'll probably be pulled into the PIRA hearings. But it's funny and comical that Mr. Rosen, and I believe the town council received your latest Frontier document that came out in September with all the new emergency contacts of Frontier, which they have to put together. This afternoon, for the third time in a row, their first liaison to the town of Talon, voicemail's not set up and he's not taking any phone calls. So the Frontier line that is laying down into the woods that either Scott probably still gets phone calls or Paul gets phone calls, or we get them on a daily, weekly basis that is hanging between Burbank Road and Route 74, that will come down. And maybe, friend, this wish with the windstorm tomorrow, it will come down. Probably, we'll probably jinx ourselves by talking about this tonight. But that will take down two to three poles, which will then obviously trigger a movement of other electrical lines, possibly closing Route 74 or Burbank Road. That's a main connector that goes up to the center of town and as as well as the Tower 911 site. But we've called that road in. I think Scott, you've probably been up there too, or might have been up there, Paul. But we've all called that in more than 30 days. And that line, if anyone wants a beautiful photo image tomorrow to take a ride up Route 74 and look off to the right, that is a huge tree that is really seriously taking a lot of pressure on those things. So I did get ahold of the operations manager tonight, but we have a lot of those around town. So keep in mind that when a pole comes down, if it's not a CLMP pole or an EverSource pole, and it's a Frontier pole, EverSource cannot replace that pole. That's a whole different aspect. And that adds hours to the whole operation. So ever source does have all the utilities contacts as far as Comcast, frontier, uh, fiber, everything else. We're very fortunate that Mr. Rosen and, um, with the, uh, help and, um, with them of the finance manager, they were able to pursue a very cost savings contract with our fiber contractor that we're able to secure a deal to, that you will see in upcoming budgets. Sorry, Mike, don't mean to take a, to, to send a money thing to them right now, but that has to be in place because if we end up losing our fiber, you can shut town hall down and you can shut the school system down and just not forget about we're using computers or anything else. So that fiber is a very crucial thing, but we have to have a contract to get our fiber back up. So those are things that we're trying to rectify and, and secure. But there's a lot of, um, utilities aspects that a lot of people don't take in, in, into apart, if that makes sense. And even though that some people still drive down a Talon Sage Road and say, there's twenty five poles sitting in ever sources parking lot, that's not a frontier pole. They can't just take a pole and bring it up here and use it. They actually go to the town of Enfield to get their poles. So, um, you know, I think Wygo Road had a frontier line down in the last storm for twenty-two days. So, um, just keep that in mind.
So you said two things here, John, that I'd like to kind of get a little bit of follow up on. One is the make safe plan. I think you said the last big drill was eight or so years ago.
Yeah.
And, um, we haven't had anything since then. And I, and I know, um, Mike, we've talked about, I've heard a lot of pushback regarding the plan that was developed in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven from, um, ever source and how it kind of got thrown out the window with this storm and none of what they were supposed to do actually ended up coming to fruition. So my first question would be, um, i- is our goal here then to just hope that Pura does the job to get this new, the twenty ten, twenty eleven plan updated to something more usable? And then when and how do we get another make safe training, uh, big drill scheduled for the town? That's the first part. The second part is, um, John, in relation to the frontier poles. So do we run electric wires on the frontier poles? Cause we don't have electricity. That's through ever source, frontier is cable. So do we run electricity on the frontier poles also? And if so, what does that mean if a frontier pole goes down and it has electrical on it and ever source isn't going to fix it?
So ever source will come out to emergency scene, secure the power, and then they call in frontier. Their frontier rep comes out, brings a digger, similar to the one that happened, the last one that would probably maybe refresh some of your memories would be, um, Metcalf Road and, um, Grant Hill Road. That road was, I think we shut, we had that road shut down, that one little subsection, Paul or Scott, correct me if I'm wrong or not, but I think that was a two or three day when the, when the accident happened in that one section, they had to come out and replace the pole. Frontier, uh, ever source was able to tie up some of the lines up, but they were still hanging across the road. And that was almost a two day event, if not a three day event to replace that pole. The last time a big incident happened was Wildwood. All the utilities lines that went up until it stopped at the top of the hill of Wildwood, um, came down in a roadway. And that was actually a two and a half day. That's why we created an emergency access way into Ellington, um, at the end of Wildwood. So, you know, when a frontier, it's a pole. So on your pole, if you, next time you're out, um, you know, walking or looking at the, the, the poles, take a look at the poles. There's, there's like four or five numbers. It'll be CLMP three, six, two, or, you know, frontier, or I think there's something else, a SNET, uh, S N A T one. So the SNET ends up referring back to, uh, the frontier ones. So when a SNET pole comes down, the only person that can put that pole back in the ground is frontier. So when you look at that pole, when you walk out, out tomorrow morning, there's, the lower wires are usually ends up being, um, your phone lines, bigger, thicker, round ones. Then it goes up to your Comcast lines, your fiber lines, and then it goes into your secondary electrical line. And on top of the poles, that's where your power lines are. So, um, if we go out tonight at one o'clock in the morning, I will come over and pick you up and show you.
Come get me, John.
It just, it's a very, it's very hard to understand. A lot of people don't understand. And then there's some dead end roads that only have like frontier lines that there are only, um, uh, you know, frontier lines. So that's a whole different aspect, but most ninety percent of the poles, you'll look, there's three to four sets of wires that, uh, end up leading all the way to the top of the pole.
So Mike, that seems to be an area that I think we need to kind of maybe focus on to try to establish better relations with frontier. If, if their contact list is, is still not up to date and we still have wires down, then how do we go about getting, um, creating a better relationship or a better, um, source at frontier to?
I don't mean to, I don't mean to be, uh, squash it, but I've been doing this for, uh, ten years and I had twenty-four towns on that we wanted to try to go after frontier with Pura. Because frontier sold a lot of their contractors that were bought out from Rocky Mountain, uh, out of Montana, and that's where their contractors were. So, um, it got worse as far as their level of response. I'm hoping that, uh, mostly municipalities after this last storm and seeing the, the problems with replacing poles and issues, that they put some type of mandate or something out there that they end up pushing to get rid of, uh, any poles or existing poles to start replacement with the ever source or utility poles. So it's a, it's a fair system. Back in two thousand and ten, eleven, we unfortunately had to borrow or, um, I didn't steal any poles because I had a resident trooper guiding me, but we ended up taking some poles that were supposed to be, um, sanctioned for replacement. And we ended up even putting a pole up at DPW just to get the power lines back up to the DPW in two thousand and eleven to get the gas pumps back up and running for DPW and highway and fire. But you won't, you, you won't get any better contacts. We, we're very fortunate that we have a brand new rep at ever source of John Frigno. You guys will meet next week or the week after, whatever. He is very, um, very aggressive, very pro bono. Him and I are trying to work on his county plan as far as contacts and everything else wise. They have a brand new data sheet of how to track these calls when they're coming in through the nine one one center. So fortunately, I'm tied into the nine one one center where we're building a better plan. And then from there, we're building hopefully a better liaison plan, um, that we'll get back into it. But I can tell you from two thousand ten and eleven, the liaisons from every community, it's just a figure person. It's a figure of speech and they don't have much power or authority when it comes into a major ELC when the, uh, ever source goes into state ELC. All they can do is take our, take our list, take our road numbers, try to get an answer, try to get back to us. We usually work with John Skalen and, and John Frigno. Tony was our rep for the last eight years. She's got promoted and moved up, but it's one of those things when you get something major devastating wise, they're actually pulling other duties as well. So it's, it's hard, but, um, especially with the COVID, they really don't want to do any, um, town liaisons. In the days of seeing ever source crews stationed at different municipalities before and dirt, uh, for the duration of the storms, those days go away because of all the priority levels. So we don't, we're not fortunate to get that. So the frontier one, um, the biggest bang for the buck would probably be pushing some type of a, a letter from a, a few municipalities, because I can tell you, every town has the same issue with frontier. And you can talk to any police department or fire department, it'll say the same thing. I think from a, from a municipality standpoint, especially, uh, election seasons and everything else wise, and before the big pure meetings happen, some big push from elected officials saying you need to correct the frontier contacts in the frontier issues. And i- if you need a backing from that, from the Talon County Mutual Aid Fire Service from all of the municipalities, I can get you a letter on that one.
So John, uh, that, from that there and Mike, uh, you said something about, um, municipalities putting together a mandate to remove the frontier poles and replace them with ever source poles. Is that something that we can do? Can we say, you know, due to the deteriorating relationship with frontier, um, we request that these poles be exchanged for ever source poles?
I'd leave that up for a question for John maybe next week and say, hey, what's the chances of, uh, the delays, fixing the delays with replacing frontier and frontier issues? What's ever source is, is how I would present that question. I'm not trying to obviously guide and tell you what to do, but I would pose that as a question from a municipality standpoint, because that is one of the biggest delays we have here in a community. Actually, uh, Paul, I think is still on the line, but Paul just fixed a low hanging frontier line that we were trying to get fixed. And then correct me if I'm wrong or not, Paul, but I think it was August twenty fourth, because a bus company was out doing their practice runs and they wanted that wire up because it was nervousing for them and the bus drivers, which is rightfully so. I put in three or four calls. We called it in through the nine one one reporting systems and Paul, I believe, just got it rectified today.
Okay. Um, anybody have anything in that section before we move on to the next section? All right. Next section is emergency response playbook for storms. Underneath there, we had handing out supplies, accessible, uh, water, debris disposal, waste food disposal, showers, cooling, heating stations and, um, uh, medical needs. So those are like the subsections underneath there. Do we have like a standard emergency response playbook? And, um, with the roles and responsibilities in it and the, you know, at day X, we do the MREs and the water. If people have been without power for so long, you know, we set up the accessible water. I know debris disposal, um, for a storm like this, we, we talked about doing it, um, after, after a while. And then we never got around to like waste food disposal. I don't know if that's common or not. Um, I know there were issues around setting up showers because of the COVID stuff, but I think we need to have something planned if this were to happen again with some, any kind of pandemic and that. We, we can't, um, I, I just personally feel like we can't keep falling back on the, well, COVID prevents us from doing it kind of a thing. Then we've got the cooling and heating stations, like when do those go into effect? Like, is there a standard playbook for all of the items that we talked about there? And one of particular concern for me is, um, our residents with medical needs. There were some people in town, um, one parent that I know personally was special needs daughter, who was one of the last areas to get electricity put on. And she was trying to keep her generator going to help with her daughter and it just was, um, it just seems rough for us to have people who have medical needs and not have, I'm not saying that we don't have a plan. We have a plan, but how do we get that? How do we make it better? How do we bring that to Pura or, or ever source or whoever? But the whole gist of this here is kind of like a standard response time for all of those things. So I don't know if something like that exists and I don't think that's what everybody kind of sent in. There's about, there's seven things on there. So if anybody, if anybody wants me to repeat any of them, I can, but. Mike, you look like you're ready to.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't, I don't think we have, uh, so we don't, especially pandemic playbook. Sorry, go ahead, John.
So the basic plan, once you start into a disaster, depending on the storm and the disaster, you're on your own anywhere between seventy-two to seventy-eight hours. That's, that's a state, that's a federal thing. From there, that's really just a hypothetical. Actually, I'm gonna ask Brendan, Brendan, that's right. Isn't that what they give for the timeframe, seventy-two to seventy-eight hours from the FEMA?
Seventy-two to ninety-six hours.
Seventy-two to ninety-six is the exact, uh, hours. You're on your own. What we end up from doing from there, depending on the nature of the event, and it could be just a windstorm or something else. If it gets into a declaration, um, there is a play, there is a playbook. So from every single couple, every, every other year or so, we have to perform, we have to put together an emergency operation plan book. And I can tell you that it is truly painful. And we get back into the basics of the training where if you have the basics of the training, you'll know where the pieces of the pie fit in. So just for example, I brought to you tonight, and I hate, I don't like to do demos, but that's one book there, which is, there's a set in Mike's office, but that's one book that is the town emergency operations plan. That's book two of two. So from that aspect, then we go into obviously the playbook of Talon County Mutual Aid Fire Service. And then we go into the regional books. From there, it all depends on the level of resources or the level of the needs of the community. So from a CEO, uh, standpoint, Mike is a very proactive town manager where he sends out emails and says, hey, guys, a storm's coming up. Do we need to do anything? Should we get together? Should we pull everybody together? Obviously Scott's already, yeah, we already, we're way ahead of you, Mike. We already sent messages out, which, you know, usually ends up happening. And from a standpoint, then we decide what is needed and what's happening. If it's a heat event, we obviously, um, Mike usually reaches out to the library or the senior center and we open up the, um, cooling stations and everything else. We've opened up cooling stations in this town for over the last five to eight years. We might've had one or two show up, never had anybody show up at the senior center. We've, we've held Fran and Becky a couple of times, uh, at nights or weekends, and I don't think anybody ever came to them. The library is nice because it's got extra hours. But with the COVID stuff, obviously, it's thrown everything to a curve again. From a school standpoint, obviously, that would be our, our top priority as far as, trying to either shelter people or use people. As far as the showers, I will tell you what the biggest aspect, and it's something that I even pushed for, for even a new school. I think, I don't want to get Lou upset with me, but even when we're building the brand new school at Birds Grove, it's something that I've always targeted this community. Your school systems, i.e. TIS, Talon Intermedia School or Talon Middle School, do not have generator backups. So if we're down for a period of time, that means that staffing at those schools need to move the food over to the other two schools into the freezers. Because back in two thousand and ten and eleven, unfortunately, we had to get rid of a lot of food wise at a couple of schools because we were out for such a long period of time. But from a standpoint of, um, major town events, it depends on what's needed, whether it's a snow event, a heat event, a weather event. You know, we could very easily happen to have, um, you know, a tractor trailer flip over on one ninety-five and take the fuel and come down into the catch basins and pretty much blow up and, and shut down one ninety-five. We could very easily have a tractor trailer carrying different types of chemicals, which we used to do highway counts that travel ID four and then shut down the three school systems because they would have to shut their ventilation systems down. So there's a, there's a magnitude of events, but as far as where everything fits in, it's getting the staff trained or getting the staff acknowledged as far as where their, where their, where their position, where their part would play out to be. And it could be anything from planning and zonings for GPS, GISs, um, map planning, map printing, um, printing out signs if we, or without power to put signs around a community as far as shelters are here. But, um, like I started saying, one of our biggest, one of our weakest links in this community is the showers and the wash. Is one of the biggest events because, you know, especially with the storms and hot weather, if you have residents and community and emergencies, how are they able to wash their clothes or be able to take a shower or get ready for the next shift or anything else? So, um, I think the highway garage is fortunate enough that I don't, I haven't been through the bathrooms up there, but I think they put in a couple of new showers and stuff like that. I think the last garage only had one shower, if that, that was in there. And I don't think any of us would like to take a shower in there. But, um, even as well as the firehouses, we're not adequately prepared for even showers at the firehouses. So it's something that, uh, we're, we're short on showers. If we were to use the schools, we'd like to have the school staffing to assist us to help us because we're in, I, I feel when we take over the school, we have the power and authority through, uh, Mike Rosen and the town council to take over the schools. But it's nice to have their own staff because I feel like, I don't like to walk into somebody's house, um, or somebody's operation. That's, that's their main thing. It, it's nice to have at least a couple of re- representatives, um, to be there because they're, they know the plant and the operating functions of that facility. So it's just something to think about in that aspect, if that makes sense. But we do have a solid plan. We have to submit it every single year. The only thing that is that I don't write anymore is the school emergency operation plan. I was delegated that years ago. Walt Willett took that back over. So Walt Willett writes your school emergency operation plan now. I basically, um, either have to approve it or have to run it by Mr. Rosen to say, would you like me to sign off on it? And then that becomes an annex into the town emergency operation plan. So there's several, there's basically about several different annexes of the town emergency operation plan, which gets, gets back into the public health emergency plan, which would be the highlight right now for us as far as an epidemic and a flu plan a- and as far as staffing and, and resources. But we have pretty good sets of plans where if we even had to pull in the buses, we have a, we have a written agreement with the bus company as well as a surrounding town for buses. And then we also have a state regional plan as far as, um, transportation with buses as well. If we had to do a mass sheltering or a, a mass exiting. And as far as the over, overall operation plan of the state of Connecticut relating back to the town of Talon, I don't want to make you feel uncomfortable, but there's a smaller town somewhere that if we are all supposed to leave Talon and supposed to go to this one smaller town, that's and supposed to go to this one smaller town that's miles and miles and miles away from here. I went there one day, that town doesn't know that we're supposed to go there. So if that makes you feel any comfortable.
No, John, John, it does not.
Cause Lou knows I'm right, but, um, it's one of those mass, uh, you know, mass big plans. But we try to do the best with what we can. We have a lot of resources. But like your friend that was having the generator issues, I had requested at least two, maybe three generator for special needs people in Talon, um, through the state of Connecticut. So when a mass plan gets activated, they actually appoint a generator liaison to the state of Connecticut. He has to take on, out of a hundred and sixty-nine towns, what is the priority? I can tell you there wasn't enough generators throughout the state of Connecticut for this last event. So I'm not gonna lie to you, I went and proficiently bought two generators back here because we try to keep them in-house here for that major, um, you know, event or issue. Do I worry about tracking or different types of stuff? Yeah, I put it into the FEMA forums and we, and we actually could possibly get funding and reimbursements for it. But when it comes back to the debt, the declaration of the emergency, I am probably Mr. Rosen's worst enemy and nightmare. He doesn't like to answer my texts or emails. But if you, if you record and you activate early, it's a lot easier. And Lisa will tell you, cause she's still squinting, cause she's looking at COVID FEMA forums right now. But if you document early, it's a lot easier three months later to say, okay, we have this all in place. Because the forms are just a nightmare to track, um, because they all have to be through ICS, two hundred, two oh one forms, twelve oh one forms. There's about fourteen hundred different, um, FEMA forms that you have to track, hours, uh, resources, electricity, usage. It, it's a, it's a nightmare. So, um, I tried to sum that the best up I could. Mr. Rosen, if I took any of your, uh, speech away, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. And I, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Before you do that, Mike, there's a couple of things that John mentioned there that I'd like to see if we could possibly look into. One, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure why I understand why Dr. Willett would be writing the emergency plan and not John. Uh, and that, why that wouldn't fall under our emergency director. Two, if we acquiesce the schools in a, a major event, if their janitorial staff and such was cha, was trained on the ICS training, then we would possibly be able to use them, um, as a town resource, which is what I think John was kind of saying that we need to do. Or how do we go about doing that? And then, um, what was the third one? Three, John, those books that you showed there are all massive, but do we have anything simplified that we could provide to town staff to say, this storm is coming, here are the roles and responsibilities for seventy-two to ninety-six hours, we're on our own. At ninety-seventh hour, we start handing out MREs, water, et cetera. We have the water available and everything else. So those were my points from John's piece there. Mike, I don't know if you can answer to any of that.
Well, I mean, the only thing I was gonna, uh, John did give a lot of good information there. And I, kind of going back to when I first started on this question was, I don't think we've written the plan, the pandemic playbook yet, which is what John alluded to, that that's gonna be probably on the next update, that's gonna probably have a couple of chapters dedicated to it. Or at least maybe have in the chapters, a section about what to do in the pandemic related to each of the, uh, other things like giving out food or having showers and things like that. It's a case by case basis. And obviously when, uh, the tropical storm in August came about, uh, it was hot at the time. I remember it was a hot week. Uh, that's what basically looking at the weather report after August fourth, triggered us to say, let's see about getting water from the National Guard. I was there with the pallets with John. And, um, you know, getting, getting the water out through, uh, first be it asked, I think the cert team to, if they would be able to help distribute water. And then we also put the call out for all, any volunteers that were willing to help pass out the water, but that was just due to the temperature. Uh, and also, um, the fact of the cooling station. So John mentioned that in the past, cooling and heating stations haven't been well utilized, but this storm was begs to differ because we had a lot of people at town hall that week that were utilizing the cooling station we had set up. We had, uh, two conference rooms down in the second floor of town hall that were utilized as charging stations. And don't forget, we had to do that while, uh, social distancing. So we had people periodically check in, wearing masks, making sure that the folks there were separated and that they were, you know, staying on opposite sides of the tables and things that if they weren't part of the same family unit. So there was a, a lot of tricks to this that we're still trying to, you know, it's writing the playbook as we talked about. But it was well utilized and, uh, I, I think handing out the MREs and the, the water when I, I was there that day too, at the EOC on that Friday, and I think it went over well, that event. Also the potable water station that John had set up and the, also the non-portable for, for, uh, for cooking, flushing toilets versus portable for cooking, uh, and drinking. You know, those, those were good. I don't know that necessarily, if the, John, maybe you can clarify if that's actually in a playbook where to, on day three, day four, we put out these things. But I think it's more about situational, you know, case by case. We, we saw the weather was gonna be hot. We figured it was a few days. It was time to start, um, helping out where we could. Uh, and also asking for resources from the National Guard was a good step too, to, to backfill, uh, the, the supply that we needed to hand out these things. So that, that was all John and his staff that put in for those resources. Um, so that was well done. And then just, I think on the last point, um, so I think, Todd, what was your third question for John? I was gonna touch on that too.
The, um, school plan, um, and John not writing that, the medical needs. And just the, oh, having the book, uh, just for all of the, um, so we know in town on day X. This is what everybody can expect kind of thing. I think that was it.
Like a, like a boiled down version of it that is easily.
Yeah, that's not like, you know, book two of two that are three inch binders, you know, like if the, you need to have, like we just said, day three, or depending on the weather, we start doing this, this, this and that. And how do we, oh, um, though, part of it was the training, like the, if we have to use the showers at the school, how do we get the janitors at the school trained and, um, you know, the town, those are town buildings. So like John said, if it comes down to, we need the schools, we need the schools. So, but we would also need staff from what he was saying, basically. So how do we loop all of that in?
Yeah, I think for that point, um, so I, you know, during the August storm, I did talk with superintendent, uh, quite, you know, quite regularly during before and after the storm. And he was, it's not that he was unwilling to do things. He was willing to work with the town and understood that in an emergency declaration that school resources could become emergency resources. There's no, there was, there was no problem there. But I think it was the, the, with specific to the showers, I think it had more to do with, uh, the overarching COVID nineteen pandemic than it was about the, um, the tropical storm that we were experiencing. I think had, in, in the absence of the COVID nineteen, I think we would have had a lot easier time, uh, dealing with showers. But, uh, you know, we had sought guidance, not just from the schools, but also from the health department on this. And they, we were, you know, the other regional towns as well, were not doing showers for the same reason. So it's not that we were, you know, we, we were doing anything differently. We were trying to keep everybody safe. And, and the good news is, is as we all, you know, we survived it and it was five or six days. Some people on the, unfortunately, did have to wait five or six days to take a shower or go to someone else's house or something. A neighbor, a neighbor who had their power on. But, um, you know, it was better than having a two week thing or being out of power. So, um, you know, I, I, John, that's something maybe we can look at if there's a, a way we can boil it down to have a, 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 a hand guide, a handbook to, uh, emergencies, something that somebody can flip to quickly.
So that depending on the, you can do the handbook, it all depends on, you know, we could start planning. And the one thing that you never want to do is start setting your resources up if you know, and you have a good idea that the power might come back on in, you know, three days or four days. But as far as resources, it's something that when the state EOC is activated, they will start sending emails out to EMDs and town CEOs saying, hey, um, we're gonna open up pods. And a pod is what would happen at the training center. It's a point of delivery. So the small pod is used at the Talon Training Center. In my big playbook, the larger pod, if it was a larger community event thing, would be the Talon High School. And if the roads were inaccessible, they would be brought in by the National Guard through pallets and dropped off or tractor trailers to use the loading docks at the schools to offload. So our only weakness down at the training center is I have to summon, um, Mr. Lappin and Paul's resources to get a loader or a skid steer down there to offload those pallets to be able to hand out. I was just happened to be smart enough that I was the only town first to put in for the resource request for the water. The bad thing was the normal warehouses that would normally attribute and stock our water or MREs were all filled with PPE because of the COVID. So they had to rethink their plan and start sending stuff up. I just happened to be okay to get maybe one and a half pallets that was delivered. But I was very proficient to say, um, because one other community refused a tractor trailer load that was at Bradley Airport. So I said, I would take that. And then we split it up between the towns of Vernon and Coventry, which were able to help them out. So this is something that I try to work very close with our counterparts because if you get something, I get something, we trade off and we, we work together to maximize the resources. But as far as the, the, um, water stations, that takes a period of time to be set up. And depending on the problem why we had to work with Connecticut Water was, um, Mr. Lappin's staff, which was, I believe, Dennis and Paul worked very hard to set up the interconnection. So that's something that we just know as department heads. And unfortunately, when, if the Summit Drive tank is not gonna have power from Depot Road off of Route seventy-four, which is the main water, that pumps up to Summit Drives and is the water tank that supplies Kate Lane all the way through to the schools. So we have to make an interconnection at that site of Anthony Road and one ninety-five. As far as the sites that we set up, we try to set up two sites. What we could do better is, and I unfortunately would love to ask Scott to let me borrow Dennis and his staff for a day or two. But it just, we didn't, you know, we get these storms and then we just get caught up with everything else. And it's something that is on my checklist. But, you know, this storm here, we probably could have set up station four. And when you set up a, um, a, a portable drinking water, if you don't have hydrants there, then you can use somebody's well, but it has to be a white garden hose. So we could have set something up at station four to come off of station four. And we could have probably ended up using, um, I would love to buy a couple of those, um, either plastic or the metal tanks. We're very fortunate that the Department of Public Works still has the two water tanks that we're able to use with their highway truck. And I want to say, we filled it twice, Paul, uh, Scott or Paul, it'd be once, twice, I think we filled it. That, that's how much usage was for people just to flush their toilets. And I think, okay, yep, uh, Scott twice, Paul saying twice.
Yeah, yeah. I know we had, we had filled it once. And when I stopped down to see Paul, he said it was just about ready to be filled again. And then, um, we didn't need it after that. So it was two tankfuls.
So, and that's their, I think, three or five hundred gallons apiece, right?
I believe it's, uh, six, uh, like six hundred gallons, if I remember right.
So six hundred gallons or so each tank, whatever. So you end up filling that up twice. That's, you know, that's twelve hundred gallons, uh, roughly one time and then filling it up again. So we could use more of those portable tanks. If you look behind the firehouse, we try to steal, well, we try to requisition or, um, borrow some of the old blue containers that come out of the school systems from the wax. We put those behind the training center because there's some people that unfortunately don't prepare for this type of stuff. You know, but we could set up more locations around the town at the firehouses because they're really at four key spots throughout the town that we can set up portable water and then also non-portable water, uh, for people to go to get. I just, you know, we buy this stuff and then also we don't use them for four or five years. And then we kind of just get rid of them or chuck them. Unfortunately, I got rid of all my brush equipment. We used to have the big forestry truck and we used to put that up. I think last time we put it up at Old Kent Road or Great Hill Road or Sugar Hill Road for people to go for non-portable. So that's a weakness of ours. The sites that we set up has to be done through Connecticut. Water as far as using the hydrants to set up the, um, the clean drinking water. So we usually try to pick one site at, you know, the other side of town at Nell's Row Park. And then the one outside the training center works well because then you have the non-portable water there as well. Unfortunately, our contractor, if we could write some type of an agreement with, uh, one or two of the vendors that I have in town, the, the particular one I, I end up using a lot is John O'lander Corporation. He did not want to let us borrow his big blue truck that he uses for, um, dirty water for paving and, and keeping the dirt roads. And I have somebody else that I use because of today's liability has changed over the last 10 years. He's like, if somebody comes and grabs that non-drinking. And I tried to look at, um, the insurance and I believe Mike Wilkinson, uh, did a great job trying to re, you know, try to secure some type of a, a blanket policy or something to cover us. And then we both looked at it and said, it just wasn't worth the, the aggravation or liability that could pose on the town. But, um, we marked, we marked the trucks very well. It says non-portable. The people that usually end up coming down to get it or use it, they know. And on the flip side, it's one of the things where at the end of the day, some people in town are worried and saying, how much, how much water did we use to offer hydrants? Are we gonna get charged for this? No, Connecticut Water waves that in a, um, major declaration. So we didn't get charged for that. We did take the meter readings and everything else wise. But, um, those are some resources that we're short on. It'd be great to get some. But Scott will probably agree and Paul will agree with me. We don't have the storage for it, um, to put it somewhere. We're, we're, we're maxed out on storage anywhere in town.
Okay. Um, then Brenda.
Thank you very much for all of that information. It's very helpful. I always learn a little bit more each time I listen. And I just want to make people aware that, um, it hasn't been mentioned, but at, during and after each event we've ever had, you know, our, our department heads, um, are looking at, looking back at how they responded and making notes of, of areas that, that things can improve. You know, best practices, things like that. So, um, I, I know that happens. It obviously hasn't happened yet during the pandemic, but I know you're keeping notes as we're going along. And I appreciate that part of the, the process. It's something that doesn't get a lot of attention. And I know usually by that time, everybody's tired. They have fatigue when it comes to, especially during this pandemic, you have fatigue, um, with the, with the events you're dealing with. But, um, I, I know you go through it. I know you make notes and, um, do updates and, and think about how to do things for the next time. So thank you for doing all that, for keeping it professional and, and basically, you know, doing your job and doing it so well. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Tammy, sorry, the, the medical needs, I do have a very robust system. During the COVID, I had a lot of cert members actually calling a lot of those special needs people, checking on them. But I cannot release that because of HIPAA. And obviously, uh, Eversource will tell you that they won't even tell us what their people are that register. So it's one of those things that I think we kind of took over. Human Services has been doing a great job of, um, steering people our direction. And we try to, obviously before a storm happens, we obviously try to task one of our cert members or our special members to go through that list and call. And you would not believe how many people, um, it's sad, it, it, especially during the COVID, we found this out during the COVID. Unfortunately, I sanctioned a few people to call and some people had passed away. So, and unfortunately, that's hard to deal with when you're calling somebody, but the list doesn't get maintained very well. But we try to send out friendly reminders on a yearly or every year basis wise. But we have a very robust list. It's, it's probably eight pages. The problem is I can't share that information. It would be nice to, um, build a more robust system, similar to what Scott was talking about. Scott's trying to build out a GIS mapping system. We used Public Eye for a few years. I just could not get this town to adopt it or accept it. And Public Eye, we actually had all our special needs population. We had all the businesses. We had all our livestock landing zones. We had all our hydrants GPS marked all the way through this whole Public Eye. We spent about four years with it. The problem is for the service fees, it's about five thousand dollars. But staff would be able to go out and put cones or barricades and drop them as pins on the mapping through the town. So we start good programs, but we just never, um, are able to either fund it or use it to its full advantage, if that makes sense. Because of all the different, um, wifi platforms and all the different things out there. But I will hammer you on one thing, and I'm not trying to be hard on this, but you want to talk. But you want to talk about the Wi-Fi and internet stuff? If there's one thing that this town council could do, and I'm, Mr. Rosen, I'm sorry, you can call me up to your office tomorrow. You can obviously try to target that we are lax on the town's end as far as IT service wise and staffing wise. Mike is only allowed a certain number of hours in staffing. And I think he, he would probably agree with me. It only puts, Lisa would agree with me, I know that. It only puts a Band-Aid as far as some of their staffing and their hours because we have a shared mutually agreement. It's something that I feel that we should look at closer to try to tie in some more hours for IT staffing and help wise. As far as also, we're still on a town.org system. And if the email system or the Comcast lines go down, we can lose very easily a communication connectivity if the lines go down. And I will tell you personally, out of the last over the last ten years, I can tell you personally, three times that we had shut the EOC down for non-connectivity issues connecting to the state web EOC because of that. That's not a good thing when it's a Saturday afternoon or a Friday night and our our email's down and we're not able to communicate with the state EOC or get alert messages or sharing of information. So that is something that Scott Roberts is very well adverse and very well knows. And it's something that we should look at more in depth down the road. And I have some suggestions. I just haven't brought them to Mr. Rosen's level yet because I'm trying to host a meeting within the next probably four weeks or five weeks to get a vendor in here to merge the town's platform to a higher level of communication in internet and a more of a robust system. So that will hopefully will be happening in the next couple of weeks, but it's something that you guys might want to put on your horizon. And it doesn't have to be done right away, but it's something that I think we should look at moving forth. Especially with all the fiber, the technology that's out there, we need to, we need to target that.
I'm kind of hoping that when we get back on track for the shared services and that, that's something that we look at because the town pays South Windsor and the Board of Ed has their own and there might be some efficiencies to be had between the whole IT area there. I thought somebody else had their hand in.
Lou did for a moment. I think it went down or maybe his question was already answered.
Yeah, my question was already answered. Thank you.
All right. So then I'm going to go on to the next section that we had here. Standard things everyone can expect to be asked to do. Area of responsibility for town, of town for down trees. Responsibility of the homeowners, responsibility of the state. So I think that's kind of a breakdown of who's responsible for what, for the down trees. Setting up of the EOC, Town Hall staff responsibilities in relation to the EOC and emergency response. And the emergency response responsibilities. So is this all something that I would think is covered in the handbook, the playbook that we had? Is that is that fair to say? All of these are in there somewhere?
John, do you know that one? That means
Yeah, all the responsibilities are laid out. It's just, we've been lax over the years of getting everybody trained or accustomed to saying, hey, guess what? A storm's happening. You're coming back at five o'clock or coming back and here's where you fit into the org chart. And we're going to need you. So whether you're coming in for the first five to six hours and then so and so is coming in for the next seven, eight hours, we've just been lax on that for a lengthy period of time.
And that's why I think maybe I'm getting at with this. I think, you know, global warming, we've, we're seeing the change in weather patterns and that stuff that we haven't typically seen in the past. And I think it would be kind of foolish of us to think that, oh, we're not going to have these kind of events very often. So I like the idea of having, like I said, a smaller playbook that says, these are the people who are expected to, like you just said, Jen, come in. Who has to staff it when? Like, weren't, that's one thing that I was very impressed with, with Eversource. I know somebody who is, I know somebody who was in the accounting area at Eversource. And when they have a storm, everybody is on hand, hands on. Like, they all have to go in. They all have roles that they have to do to get everything on on track. There is nobody that does not have something to do during a storm. So area of responsibility, you know, like whether it shifts and get people trained and all of that. I think that's an area that we're we're probably lacking in from what I'm hearing tonight. Lou?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Yeah, I think that one of the things I would suggest to everybody is, I mean, when I was helping out in the EOC with Chief Laitel, that I had an opportunity to go through the, the big book, I mean, the entire emergency response book. And I think that's something that really all the department heads and 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 all the town council members that we should all at least take a look at it because it's got a number of annexes. It's got a lot. I mean, it covers pretty much almost every possible contingency that that we could be addressing here in town. Just sort of see what's involved in it. Because there's a lot of things that under the NIM system and the ICS system that are required to be inside it. This is actually basically like a federal guideline that that Chief Laitel is following by putting together this book. And so I think it's something that that we all need to be familiar with as well. And I think it's something that rather than having an individual like handbook is for each of the different players, each of the different teams, is to have it so that each department has it and that the the department heads and the assistant department heads and everybody else in the, in the entire chain of command is familiar what their role would be in these various different things. Rather than recreating the wheel. That's just my input. Thank you.
So are you thinking a slimmed down version or just everybody has to be familiar with what's in the two books?
My, my suggestion is be familiar with because, you know, as we're going into different seasons, there are different annexes. So you could flip to the one annex and it'll say, okay, for storm response or for this response or for that response. Rather than pulling out like a smaller handbook that you just get the big book and that is we approach winter. Okay, well, this is what we should be prepared for. Flip to this annex and review it. Or that, okay, we're coming into the summer and spring. So we're going to be familiar with these, with this regarding basically the same type of things as a storm. You know, so that as we prepare for the different seasons, they could just flip to the annex rather than creating a new handbook each time.
So after having reviewed that, are you comfortable that that exists and it just comes down to a matter of training?
I I would say, I mean, if upon seeing it, it's, it's an incredibly robust playbook. It covers almo- almost everything that you that you can imagine. And so I think it is something that it's just a matter of training and familiarization with with what the response would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brenda?
Yes, I I'm a little concerned with the way that this conversation is going because we have people like janitors, department heads, teachers, secretaries, whoever, during the middle of an emergency or responding to emergency, who either may not be able to respond or have these kind of duties or be able to perform these kind of duties or may have different responsibilities that would prevent them from doing this. For example, if we have some janitors who are in the fire department, you know, where do they end up reporting for their role? We may have teachers or or department heads or secretaries who are on the National Guard or the Air National Guard or whatever, who have responsibilities that would supersede what they may be getting assigned to during a book like this. It seems like we're being, we're going to be dictating to people that they're going to have additional job roles during a emergency that they may not be able to perform, given whatever the circumstances are. So I think we need to be cognizant of that fact and we need to be careful about our wording so that we're not being inclusive of everybody's personal and professional responsibilities. And if you're saying it's like a certain job, like a school secretary is going to be needing to do a a shelter. If that, does that mean that we need to make sure that the secretary is physically able to do the jobs and we're we're going to be excluding hiring for a secretary, someone with disabilities? You know what I'm saying? I I I think we need to tread very carefully here with our wording. I know there's going to be plenty of people in Talend who step up to help during an emergency, absolutely. And I know absolutely there are many employees in the town of Talend that are more than willing and able to step up. But everybody has more than one role. And we need to be cognizant of of where we might get in trouble here with with our wording and with what we're, what our expectations are.
Lou?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Well, I would, through the, through ma'am chair, I would just I asked Ms. Felucy to expand on that. I mean, is it something that you're saying that we shouldn't be adding in certain responsibilities into certain job, job descriptions for for training or for other things, for other things? I I mean, I'm just trying to get some clarification on it. And also that this is something that we would be able to, you know, that you would leave it up to the department heads where if there's some, if there's somebody that can't carry out a job because of their obligations through the National Guard or something else, that's something that that one that they should, that that they should be aware of so that they can plan accordingly for contingency plans and not necessarily include somebody in it. But I think that we can't just, I understand what you're saying about being careful about how we word things. But if we're going to have people responsible for certain positions and include training in it, that that's, that's part of a job description and that we're not looking to exclude anybody, but they also have to be aware of their responsibilities as part of that position.
So my point is, we don't have some of this information as part of someone's job responsibilities. And we were talking, if I understood the conversations that have been happening previous to this, we've been talking about looking at roles and responsibilities and adding to those job descriptions as we hire people. So and we're also talking about making sure that department heads are reading this book. So this sounds like to me, we have further, we're creating further expectations than what than what we have right now. And again, everybody has many roles and responsibilities and they may not be able to participate in something that's after hours. They may not be able to participate in something on nights or weekends because of, you know, what's happening with their family. But if we're opening a shelter, we're telling the janitors they need to be there. Not work hours or whatever we come up with. We're going to run in, we're going to run into issues.
But we, if we can't open it, if we don't have staff there. So I guess, you know, that's part of like what I was saying before with the handbook of what's expected when there's a storm kind of a thing. So to say that, I don't know. Mike, you're going to say something?
So this, this kind of goes back to the conversation we were having a couple of hours ago, just, you know, and Brenda, I think, reflected it properly again is that, you know, our job responsibilities, our I I can't speak to every job description. I just, I don't have them all on hand right now, but we would need to look at which ones have sort of roles that would, at least on the town side, I don't know about the school side, but on the town side, we'd have to see which positions would support an EOC structure, incident, incident command structure, whether it's doing something in the office, at the EOC, at a shelter, handing out MREs. I mean, I I just want to put it out there. Like I said earlier, with finance, for example, there was flexibility there that people were willing to not, you know, to that, to not take a day or whatever and not do their normal responsibilities and go down to the EOC and assist. That, I know that happened maybe on a once or twice basis, but we we could have people do that and just assign them under their, you know, other duties as assigned that are part of their jobs. But if it's something that we're going to like hire people and let them know during the hiring process, hey, you have a crucial job to this town, you have to be available during emergencies. Well, that's something that we would need to do probably as we're hiring or as we're amending job descriptions in the future. Mike, Mike Wilkinson is on the line as well. I did just text with him, but Mike explained to me a situation, I think it was the 2011 storms where shelters were opened and we actually asked for volunteers of the town staff to go assist with sheltering operations. It wasn't a mandate. It was a request for help. And I, Mike, how did that go? I think you're on me.
It went well. Well, yeah, I think you have to really differentiate to what happened in 2011 and 12 to what happened this year because COVID made it a lot different. In prior storms, I think we had plenty of volunteers to help out. COVID made it just a lot different. And a lot of the things we're asking people to do were not anything that they weren't weren't, weren't different from what they were normally doing. It was people checking people in at the front door of the school so that they can go into it, take a shower, walking the people to the shower, walking them back. So this isn't anything that's detailed. There obviously were a bunch of volunteers that would help out at the EOC. The the difficult part is, is making sure that John can use them or they're trained enough so that John can use them productive way because you know what to do. It takes time for John to get them up to speed and sometimes he needs people just to hit the floor running. So so you really have to guess differentiate between this COVID and the storm that just happened and what's happened in the past. So there are two different things. So we have to kind of look at them differently, but I think we can try to come to some accommodation in between so we can go forward realizing that one or two of those situations might happen again.
Thank you, Mike. Lou?
Thank you. Yeah. And I mean, that's basically my point is where for the additional training for, or like the training requirements for Town Hall staff. It's not necessarily saying that they're be mandated at every time, but at least if they are going to be asked to volunteer, if they're willing to volunteer, they have this training done upfront so that they can actually be somebody that could participate and that could be used easily and quickly rather than having to get, you know, spend three hours or four hours or a day or two, getting the training that they need, ICS training that they need to get up to speed to the point where they'd be useful. So that's what, that's, that's one of the main points that I'm trying to make with the training requirements as part of the job description. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, I can send you out a real quick PowerPoint that I I ran a couple of years ago. I think it was definitely before Mike's, Mr. Rosen's time, but I think Mike Wilkinson was down there. Steve, I think Steve and Mike maybe run it downstairs in one of the conference rooms. It was a an EOP and the EOC, what the terminologies and the plans are. And we ran some staff through and, you know, as a matter of fact, like Mike said, I mean, about five or six years ago, we had, we had a handful of library staff members that were trained in Web EOC. It's one of those things when you train these people, if you don't, if you don't use it, if you don't use it, you lose it and keeping up the terminology. You know, it's a fortunate thing that in in my world, I don't think there's an hour that doesn't go by that I don't use it. So, you know, it's one of those things where you get trained, these staff members are asked different people, but it's like, well, what Mike is saying, we had some, we had some volunteers and it's, it's hard because you want to make sure that the people that you're credentialing are coming into. You might, someone might think that even checking a certain person into a shelter is like, well, what's the big deal? They're just signing somebody in. There's a whole other caveat that goes along with whether it's special needs, a disability. Today's gender stud, like there's all, there's a caveat that plays together with everything that you have to be so respectful and cautious. And then you have the accountability of kids and parents. And then, you know, where do you put people? There's a whole different caveat of that. And and then it goes back to the tracking resources. So, you know, I I had the CERT team trained into shelter management and it was a whole handful of people. It just funny games coming to a shelter saying, yep, okay, we're just going to run everybody through. It's way more than that. And if something were to mess up, I guarantee you that would be in one of your special agendas, executive sessions at the end of the council night, some night, because I slipped or one of our people slipped. So I hold a very, very high standard and I, and I, and probably why I'm put in ninety hours a week in this town because I just hold a high standard and I can't mess up because I don't want to have what ends up happening because I see other towns go through it. We've never been through, run through the mud. But, you know, as far as staffing and and extra people, they all need the basic training first and then we can move on from there. But you know, it's just asking certain people and, you know, it's something that we've tried this so the So the first time that we tried with the school systems was a night and maybe Mike Wilkinson will smile when I say this, but Mr. Werbner worked with the, uh, Lieutenant Governor and approached me in the county town, uh, in the town auditorium and said, go find 110 shovels because Nancy Wyman just got you 110 National Guards people to shovel off the top of the school roofs. And that's when Mr. Guzman was here. And we actually even borrowed 75 snow blowers from the community here. And then we had to return those snow blowers and we had to document those snow blowers. That was a very, very long taxing event. But even a simple snowstorm, we had janitors that said, no, we're not going up on the roof. I don't get hazardous duty pay. Or trying to pull the janitors back to help out Bev down at the, the senior center. It's one of those things where these events don't happen, but it causes such little controversy back and forth. And it puts everybody like at edge or like pointing. It's something that is hard. It just, um, you have to have a devastating event or something else that goes on to have people realize or to come together. And we do have a very fortunate community that people come out of the woodworks and help each other out. But, um, I think maybe if we start lightly with a PowerPoint and then maybe have some group discussions or something, um, to hopefully build camaraderie and try to rebuild everything. I think that's probably the best way to approach it because every department head has a key, uh, key asset, but it might not be for every storm and might not be for every event. Um, you know, there could be people right now with the COVID stuff that could be tracking a lot of stuff through Web E O C. We're one of the very few top, we're one of the biggest towns that probably are lax on, um, keeping up with the state of Connecticut, Web E O C. It takes a lot of practice and training. And if you don't use Web E O C every day, you lose it. So right now, once this COVID gets over, we might not touch it for a year to two years. And if you don't go back in and refresh yourself and retrain yourself, you'll lose it. And then also just like Mike knows, it causes me extra aggravation down at the, the training center. Then I'm back up yelling at Mike and Mike up in town hall. Um, so it's just, it's a lot, it's a lot to take on. And when you have a few department heads that run 100 miles an hour, it's, it's hard. And yeah, we're trying, we're, I mean, my biggest concern, I think Paul can agree with me, I think Scott can agree with me. You've got some years down the road here that some of us are, are getting close to retirement or leaving. And we're, we want to make sure that you have a, um, a success plan put together to, um, stay strong in the town or, or have some, uh, great leaders or some other great people to take over. Um, and that's one of my goals over the next, maybe, maybe two months or so is to make sure things are in place.
Okay. I'd appreciate that PowerPoint. That'd be good. Thank you. Um, that gets us to the next thing. Hopefully this one will be quicker, um, not difficult, but what happens when a home is damaged? When like a tree comes down and makes a home, people have to, to leave the home. What's the process for that? It's back to again, the town responsibility, our responsibility, um, the homeowner's responsibility, et cetera.
So a tree, a homeowner's responsibility, a building inspector has to be out called out to the scene. The building inspector has to put and post the house as unsafe or uninhabitable. The problem is we don't have a large enough account to have in the town through human services, because sometimes you might have to put the person up. So the first level action is obviously we respond out there as a nine one one call for a tree through a house. It happens a lot. We end up calling Jim. The last house, the last car, actually the last car through a house was a Talon Inn that was an accident. We called Jim out. He flagged, uh, certain sections of the Talon Inn. This last storm, we had three houses that were destroyed. Um, and Jim came out, flagged the houses. We asked the people, do you need human services? Do you want Red Cross? We always offer those services. A lot of times Red Cross will come out and give gift cards and give someone a, a chance to, you know, set up a hotel or something else. And then they end up going to a hotel. From there, they end up touching base with Jim Packman, the building inspector, and they come back. And a lot of times like this last storm, if they have insurance on their house and they have an insurance plan, that is on their own, FEMA does not step in or the town does not step in to incur any of those costs or anything else. Mike, I truly apologize for cutting you off.
No, you, you hit it on the head, John. I was going to say every, you, you probably did a better job than I could. I was going to say just the bottom line is, is that it should go through the homeowner's insurance or potentially the renter's insurance, working with the homeowner's insurance.
So a renter should have insurance also?
Well, we can't dictate that. That would be in the lease between the homeowner and the renter.
But, but either way, even if they were renting and a tree went through somebody's house, then the homeowner has homeowner's insurance on the house. And any repairs or anything that to the house would have to go through that, would that also cover like the reimbursement for hotels and such? So if we have a building inspector comes out and says the house is deemed uninhabitable, we ask the people if they want human services or Red Cross help. And we can get them, um, gift cards or accessibility to a hotel is what we're saying, right?
I think it's for a short term stay at the hotel, maybe three to five days, somewhere in that ballpark. And that's, I know the Red Cross, uh, was, I think they offer, um, is, uh, John, am I correct in from, does Red Cross offer sheltering or hotel vouchers? I've heard, I think vouchers, right?
The vouchers for the hotel. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. And we don't, right? Only Red Cross does. We don't do the red, the, the shut, the vouchers that the Red Cross does, correct?
I think that's a specific program. The Red Cross has vouchers. I mean, through our human services department, certainly they would help out if they can with, uh, you know, whether it's food that might be needed from the pantry or if it's, uh, something that's special circumstance where they have gift cards that they can issue for Big Y or something like that, then, but you know, Bev Bellaty is always willing to help where she can and where she has jurisdiction to do so. So I would, I wouldn't say it's an either or situation. I think when there's an emergency, um, you know, we all come together and, uh, and I know I, I can picture from the August storm, there was a family that had an issue. And I know Red Cross did come, uh, originally and Bev also made contact with them as well.
Okay.
And then Red Cross always follows up with myself. I believe Mr. Rosen and the human services gets an email as far as, um, how many people they serviced or what they did in our town. And that even goes for fires.
Okay. So we're not leaving people in the lurch if their houses are damaged. We're doing everything we can to get them, uh, food or supplies in touch with Red Cross. We'll get them into a hotel and then they have time to contact their insurance and work on what they have to work on there.
As long as they call nine one one and were made notified of the situation. There are many driveways that are about 5,000 feet off the road and sometimes we do not drive every single driveway.
Yep.
I can tell you that there were some sheds and some other vehicles that were damaged. The community was awesome about sending me pictures and everything else wise, because I documented all that and sent it to the state. But there aren't, there could be times when something was not reported. I E, someone might be on vacation and we didn't get notified or somebody was not home. Um, there are those case by case bases. Yes.
Yep. And John's correct. I just actually found, uh, from August, uh, August of 2020, a follow-up email that where Red Cross rendered services and, and they explained funds were provided towards immediate needs, funds for temporary lodging, comfort kits, things like that. So they do document it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that one? All right. Yes. The next one, public response and statements. Uh, our reporting system, the nine one one, um, what is our reporting system methods? I have nine one one, um, the reverse, uh, email and then the ever bridge. Um, oh wait, our reporting system, nine one one email or phone calls. I think that one was when last storm came, we had multiple different ways that we were getting the information. Um, should, at the end, John, you created that, uh, that you had that, uh, email, which I thought, like you said, you got a good response out of people sending in information. So when there's something like this, how do we want people to report that there's a tree on their house or a tree on their car or a tree down and they don't have power? Like my house is, my road is not on the list, et cetera, et cetera. And then, um, the next one was what ways are we communicating storm prep, safety during storms and post-storm and post-storm cleanup?
The, as far as the communication aspect of it, we, like we said, we try to use the, the e-blast system, the Talon Alert system. If it's a major duration or event and the E O C is open, then Mr. Rosen, uh, would make the, uh, choice to use, uh, an ever bridge message to send out similar to what we did with the COVID stuff. Um, but on a case by case basis, we don't use those normal small things on an everyday basis. Because if our internet's down or like this last storm, what we're finding out is that from a case by case basis, the, uh, the infrastructure was so well damaged throughout the state that there were many people that did not even have phone service. Um, so a lot of people are getting rid of their home phones and other aspects. And a lot of people are going to the obviously cell phones and, uh, that technology. So when that happens, that obviously we have no way of communicating. This happened in 2011 as well, and we had to go to the communication aspects. And we tried to target the four areas of town of the firehouses to put community message boards. So this way here, people can drive by or go see what's happening. But that takes staff to do as well. And unfortunately, Mr. Lappin's crew usually does a lot of those sign, sign boards or message boards. Um, you know, maybe we could look at a civic organization. The only thing I can say positively is through this COVID, we have a lot more civic organizations that are tied into us now. We have a great relationship and we have four churches or four, I don't know if church is the right word or what the, we have four religion groups around town that are very, working with us very nicely that, um, opened up their doors to us and are working, uh, together that we would probably empower some of them as well to assist us and help us, which they did. Um, like Mr. Rosen was saying with the cooling stations, they opened up their place. Um, so, you know, more or less, you know, we have those type of aspects and, and communication links. And it's a case by case basis that depending on the nature of the event or the nature of the storm. Um, you know, do we use ever bridge? Do we do, do we use reverse nine one one as much as we should? No, um, we probably should use more of it. But the problem is as soon as you start using more of it, and I am not talking bad about any of the department, but when you start getting law enforcement events or something else, the, the, we're obviously tied into the state police. They don't use a lot of it. Vernon PD sometimes doesn't use a lot of it. So the reverse nine ones there, when you can alert residents or alert different peoples of a chase or of a lockdown situation. We don't, we don't use a lot of that, um, throughout Connecticut. And we're, we're, um, from my end, we're trying to push that more from emergency management standpoint across the board. Uh, to get back into it, especially with the cell phones. But then again, we have so many people that are silencing their cell phones at nighttime and they're on vibrate mode or shutting them off. So they don't get the phone calls that either way for an evacuation or a Talon Alert or, uh, an important message. So it's a caveat. It's a catch 22. Um, and then some people, obviously with the storms, they save their batteries, um, because they don't have a generator or they shut the generators off at night. So it's a very hard aspect to manage, if that makes sense.
Um, anybody have anything on the public?
Just to chime in real quick, um, starting November 15th through April 15th, we put up on our website, uh, snow guidelines, which discuss everything from something as simple as where to place the snow at the end of your driveway. Don't put it on the uphill side. So we push it back in, push it, put it on the downhill side. So we push it away. Um, we talk about mailboxes, the right height, then when we replace them. We give a, a scenario on when it first starts to snow, we go out and we apply chemicals. After an inch and a half to two inches of snow, we start plowing. Uh, we give a, a rundown on, um, you know, what we typically do. As soon as we decide and we see that the snow is starting to build up, we post, we, we reach out to the, uh, the three major television stations and put notices up for parking bans. Even though there's a parking ban in effect from November 15th through April 15th, we do it as a gentle reminder. We also tell people online, if you have garbage and recycling, keep them back in your driveway. Don't put them out on the street because inevitably we are going to knock them over. And, uh, you know, so we try to give the, the basics. Um, and we'll have people call us and we'll, we'll tell them to go on a website. They can print it out, you know, especially some, you know, other people, older people who, um, have a hard time remembering different things. And there's, there's certain phone numbers in there for them to call if there's a, an emergency. So we try to keep people up to speed on that end.
Scott, I have lived here for 35 years and I did not know that you did that.
Well. Now you do.
That's something. So what that makes me say is can we, when you do that, can you please notify us? And we can send out, Mike, maybe we can send out an e-blast that says, you know, go to D P W page for snow guidelines. We can put it on social media and stuff like that. Um, lived here for 35 years and I never knew that that was out there and available. So.
Yeah. Well, we, we do it this year. Let's put it out as an e-blast through the news feed.
Yeah.
I like that. Scott, I've been sharing your information for years. Thank you. It's been very informative and helpful.
Thank you.
Um, the next item is proposals to mitigate future power outages. So I guess this is where we kind of hear from, from you guys on. Do you have any proposals, anything that we should be thinking about? That might help us in Talon to mitigate future power outages? Off the top of my head, I immediately think, you know, you've got a hundred thousand dollars for tree trimming, but not sure, um, how much that will get us, but.
Right. Again, that, that kind of goes back to what I said at the beginning of this discussion. Ever source typically cuts back about 15 or 20 feet. Um, and if you have a 40 foot tall tree, it's going to take it down. You, you, we can't cut back all the way to everybody, you know, take all of the trees down. It's, it's just impossible, especially in a town like this. And this is what gives Talon that rural, um, character. It's beautiful. I mean, I, I hate going out and cleaning leaves, but I do enjoy the, the privacy and the, you know, the shade and the coolness that it provides. It's, uh, but with it comes the, the risk of, uh, taking down, um, you know, power lines. And you can go into a neighborhood that has all underground utilities. And all it takes is something out on a main road to hit a line and they're just, they're out just as much as we are.
Buy a generator.
Buy a generator. John? I don't know that that was helpful.
In all honesty, I, I mean, our biggest message is this last storm. I would have thought by now, 2010, 11, we would have people not still doing the old fashioned way of taking their power cord and jumping it through their wash machine to power the generator, to power their house. Because we almost had a firefighter and an ever source Wyman killed on the other side of town this last storm. So we still have that happening. And as far as the messages, like Scott said, we send out all the messages we were sending out. We're hammering fire prevention this, this month here, but we try to send out a lot of messages, but people are still running the gas grills inside the garages. They're still taking the generator and the bad thing is with like this last storm, it, it was hot out. So a lot of times a lot of these generators aren't powering the, um, their air conditioners. The fumes are going right into the house. So we're going back out at one o'clock, three o'clock, five o'clock with C O fumes. Um, we hammer the messages. If anything, like I said, it, it's too bad with the COVID stuff. I was actually thinking of doing a Zoom emergency preparedness. Get ready for winter, get ready for, you know, storm wise and trying to get enough people down to this training center where we could do some stuff outside in the parking lot and maybe get somebody that is pro bono with a good iPad to walk around to the different stations to say, hey, this is what's happening. Um, just to do something, because even with the fire prevention stuff, we're like, kind of really having it and struggling right now. We're trying to put some, some things together. So we're trying to get the messages out there the best we can. But we've run the classes numerous times down at the training center for, uh, preparedness wise. And, um, I think it's time to run another one and we'll, we'll do our best. And, you know, it would be nice to have all of yous as support there and, and anybody else that, you know, when they see leadership and they, they show support behind it, um, you know, whether it's on a Zoom or standing or being a part of it, they see the names, they see the stuff, it, it pushes it, empowers them. And if you hit 20 people, those 20 people are going to think they have the same message and hit another 20 or 40 people. So, um, that'd be my recommendation.
I like that idea a lot, John. I like the, um, preparedness, um, training. If we can get something like that, like even if you said, even if it's just online with an iPad and stuff, I think that's good. Right now it's before winter, it's fall. Let's start hitting people up as soon as we can.
I'll try to do that before I leave.
Leave? Why are you not leaving? I know where you live, John.
For a short period.
Um, okay. That gets us to the last part here, communication with the utility services. Uh, one thing I noticed, uh, communication with ever source, we had two different resources. John had one and then Mike, we were talking to another one. Um, so there was that, like, how do we streamline the communication with, um, the utility services? Another one was all companies that have services provided via telephone poles, cell towers, internet, et cetera. And who is our liaisons, uh, working agreements and areas of shared responsibility? And then the last one on there was Connecticut Water and Talon Water Commission Communication, um, Yeah, and their response. So from communication with Eversource, are we down to one now? Is it just Frigno?
Uh, well, I think when, in that particular storm in uh, August, Jonathan Frigno is our community relations specialist. He's sort of our David A. uh, person that we interact with. He and I speak regularly. He's also, we're actually speaking tomorrow after this meeting to talk a little bit about what to expect for next week and stuff. But um, he's sort of our go-to like boots-on-the-ground representative. The other gentleman that John had interacted with uh, is John Scanlon, who, um, John, do you know um, his title or how he differs from Frigno?
So he's a community liaisons as well. They just uh, overlap each other when especially duration of uh, hours of storms. So John was always there. John has always been there before John Frigno. John just came aboard uh, just about a year or so ago.
Right, so I was interacting more with Jonathan Frigno because we already have a pre-existing relationship that we've been working on for about a year. And uh, John Scanlon knows John Littell, so I guess you guys spoke um, you know, on the evening hours and stuff. There's also uh, as you know, these events are twenty-four hours a day. There are people that come on overnight that are neither of the two Johns. There's, you know, mid, you know, midnight people that if something goes in the middle of the night, they'll, they'll update John Littell or myself. So uh, I don't think that actually happened during this tropical storm, but we could have even heard from a third or even a fourth representative from Eversource, depending on the time that needed, they needed to communicate with us.
So how that does happen, Mike, I don't know if I informed you, but Paul knows. I think I sent him a text. I don't know if I woke him up. So after eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock at night, they shift changed. At two-thirty in the morning, I got a phone call from a rep that got the number from John Scanlon. And he ended up calling me and I said, are you serious? And I forgot what the word I used was, calling me at two-thirty in the morning. No one else from my community was answering their phone call. So that's how we were able to secure the crew for that Thursday morning because we were able to say, hey, somebody answered, yep. And Paul and I had made arrangements the night before to say, okay, they were gonna pull crews in. And that's how we secured them again for the same Friday. So sometimes when you answer your phone or have your phone or, or having somebody there, so that's where the overlap of staffing um, is, is truly hu- huge and helpful because unfortunately, I don't know what's wrong with me. I leave my phone on twenty-four-seven and it's by my bed. So um, you know, it's one of those things where when you get into E O C mode, but this last storm, it just didn't really call for E O C, I don't think, Mike. I think we were, we were handling it from a case by case basis and with the COVID, we really didn't open up and we didn't have the needs. If it wasn't COVID, we probably would have staffed the firehouses and the E O C throughout the night. Because when we left that night, there was, there was over and but Paul's still on, I believe we're at a hundred and ten or ninety-five roads that were shut down and we couldn't still get through. So having a hundred and ten roads and me walking out of a firehouse uh, at that time of night is ever, is uncalled for. But when you're not even getting a phone call back from Eversource, it's something that you do what you gotta do and you, and you, and you, you play it by year. But uh, we are also in the summer months. If that storm hit in the wintertime, we would have had a really difficult, different type of situation. So um, that's how we kind of communicate with Eversource. And a normal storm, they would end up leaving a resource or a person dedicated to Talon because John reports to four or five different towns.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
And I think that just leaves the Connecticut Water Talon Water Commission. Mike, did you have anything or John from them in regards to this storm?
Oh, John's got muted, sorry.
Connecticut Water is one of the things that we try to touch base with as far as uh, resources for water. And then obviously if we need to go further, we would end up bringing a tractor trailer in, which that's one of the other resources if we had to put a tractor trailer somewhere. Coventry uses a tractor trailer, usually at Highland Park or one of the other places in Coventry for uh, clean, pure drinking water. So as far as that, that's how that works. And obviously if uh, in a duration of uh, storms or fire stuff, they obviously would boost up water line, uh, water pressure at the two different substations that are located throughout Talon. I, I, I saw one of the other questions, while I got the floor, you mentioned D P H. So D P H gets involved in storms and related events if it comes to a time when they have to send out notifications for boil advisory of water, meaning people's wells or water. And they also touch base with all the community wells that are in, in water systems that are in town. So you have Connecticut Water and Talon Water Coach Mission. We communicate uh, very well as, as, uh, well as Scott and Paul do as far as the well towers and keeping that up to date, they handle all that. But they send, D P H would advise us when it's time to send out a, a water boil advisory or if there's a water system that the generator field, um, you know, off of Baxter Street or one of the other lower um, systems off of Willie Circle. So we know where those water systems are in town. We try to touch base with those people saying, hey, is your generator up and running? Do you have power? Do you have water? Because we could have a failure and then you have a large stream of residents throughout a different little nick of areas of town that don't have water or drinking water. So um, we have a really good um, list of that as well, if that makes sense. And the sewer, and they get back into the septics as well. So if there was issues with flooding and uh, issues with water stuff, that's who would end up handling all that through Rob's office.
Okay, that is the last thing that I had on there. On the list from everybody. Let's see, and I, so I have a few few takeaways. I have here uh, training and I C S um, at the minimum level required or um, review the requirement for staff. Updating job descriptions to include emergency duties. D P W send out their preparedness information via e-blast um, or other form. And I have the frontier takeaway about the context. Did I miss anything? Everybody seems good with it? Does anybody else have any feedback or any other questions? All right, I guess uh, if everybody is good with that, then um, I think we're wrapped up unless anybody else has anything else.
Just the thanks, probably just in general to all the hard work. Steve Jones, sorry, I didn't say my name before speaking, just to the chief, to Scott, to everyone. And even in public, you know, human services and all the various organizations that helps people through the storm. And some of the people, even on the council that volunteered their time to help out and help out with the storm recovery and, and uh, you know, handing out food and stuff like that. You know, it kind of takes a village to get through certain things, certain crises. So just wanna make sure you're aware that there are a lot of people out there that won't email you directly, but really care about the work that you do every day, so.
Absolutely. Thank you to everybody. With that being said, it is nine fifty-nine. Steve, hurry.
A motion to adjourn at nine fifty-nine, so everybody can get a good night's rest and hopefully uh, no issues with the wind tomorrow afternoon.
Brenda Felucy, I second that.
Any discussion? Just thank everybody here that came tonight. Lisa, you didn't get to talk, all the other staff here, Paul, Rob, Carl, you know, James, everybody, thank you guys very much for coming. Scott, John, all of you, I appreciate it. All those in favor? Brenda? Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I am an I. Thank you all very much. Have a good night. Uh, we'll be talking to you soon.
Or daughter, whoever that was on the video.
Yeah, he wanted to say hi. I, I shoot him away.